Yeah. 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 Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Palo Alto for Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Palo Alto for Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Palo Alto for Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Palo Alto for Monday, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, here at five thirty P. M. And with the clerk, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, here at five thirty P. M. And with the clerk, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, here at five thirty P. M. And with the clerk, please call please call the roll. please call the roll. the roll.
Of course, Councilmember Rektal. Of course, Councilmember Rektal. Of course, Councilmember Rektal.
Here. Here. Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames. Councilmember Lithgow Hames. Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
Here.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Stone.
Here. Here. Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker. Vice Mayor Vinker. Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here. Here. Here.
Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Lou.
Here. Here. Here.
Mayor Lowing. Mayor Lowing. Mayor Lowing.
Here. Here. Here.
Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Burton.
Here. Here. Here.
For the record, all present. For the record, all present. For the record, all present.
Thank you. Tonight, to start off, we have actually three proclamations that we're Thank you. Tonight, to start off, we have actually three proclamations that we're going Thank you. Tonight, to start off, we have actually three proclamations that we're going to read for individually, of course, for various events. Do you want to announce going to read for individually, of course, for various events. Do you want to announce to read for individually, of course, for various events. Do you want to announce the first one? the first one? the first one? City clerk? City clerk? City clerk?
Sure. So our first proclamation is a proclamation honoring National Public Safety Sure. So our first proclamation is a proclamation honoring National Public Safety Sure. So our first proclamation is a proclamation honoring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five. Telecommunicators Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five. Telecommunicators Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five.
And I think we have staff in chambers to listen and receive the proclamation. Is And I think we have staff in chambers to listen and receive the proclamation. Is And I think we have staff in chambers to listen and receive the proclamation. Is that correct? that correct? that correct? Right?
All right, and the item three is a proclamation celebrating Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta.
Right? Right?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
There we go. There we go. There we go. So why don't I read? And then you can come up and respond. All right, great. So why don't I read? And then you can come up and respond. All right, great. So this So why don't I read? And then you can come up and respond. All right, great. So this And Vice Mayor Vinker is going to be reading that today. So this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any
Whereas Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta co-founded the National Farm Workers Association,
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, requiring police, fire, or emergency medical time, requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency time, requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency
which later became the United Farm Workers Association. And whereas they understood the
services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to
importance of coalition building and worked in conjunction with other farm labor movements
firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police
to make the United Farm Workers Association a reality. They worked to call for better
the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained
conditions for farm workers and their families. They took on table grape growers who had been
upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City
exploiting farm workers, and began a nationwide grape boycott that led to the first farmworker
from citizens who telephone the City of Palo Alto Communications Center. And whereas public from citizens who telephone the City of Palo Alto Communications Center. And whereas public of Palo Alto Communications Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the
union contracts. And whereas their mission was to reclaim dignity, fair wages, medical
safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas
coverage, benefits, and humane living conditions for hundreds of thousands of people. And
services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement and fire personnel
whereas the popular phrase, "Si se puede," is attributed to their activism and civil
and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, provided. and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, provided. by monitoring their activities by radio, provided.
rights work. It was Dolores Huerta who first said the words, which translate in English to "Yes, I can," or "Yes, we can," as she rallied support for worker and immigrant
And whereas public safety dispatchers of a city of communications, communication centers And whereas public safety dispatchers of a city of communications, communication centers And whereas public safety dispatchers of a city of communications, communication centers
rights. And whereas through fierce advocacy, Dolores Huerta was instrumental in securing
have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment
the California Agricultural Labor Relations Act of nineteen seventy-five, a first-in-the-nation
of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and
law that extended collective bargaining rights to farm workers. And whereas Cesar Chavez
professionalism during performance of their job in this past year. Now therefore, I, Ed professionalism during performance of their job in this past year. Now therefore, I, Ed professionalism during performance of their job in this past year. Now therefore, I, Ed
drew attention to environmental issues, such as the use of chemical pesticides that endangered
Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby
the lives of not only farm workers but also consumers. And whereas their catalyst to act
proclaim and call upon all citizens of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth proclaim and call upon all citizens of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth proclaim and call upon all citizens of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth
came from their early introductions to inequities with Cesar Chavez, born on March thirty-first,
to nineteen twenty five as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and join in to nineteen twenty five as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and join in to nineteen twenty five as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and join in
nineteen twenty-seven, in Yuma, Arizona, and later moved to California after his parents
honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our
lost their farm during the Great Depression and became migrant workers. Dolores Huerta
citizens safe as of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Delighted to read that. citizens safe as of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Delighted to read that. citizens safe as of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Delighted to read that.
was born on April tenth, nineteen thirty, in Dawson, New Mexico. At a young age, she was exposed to the hardships that her community faced, but she was greatly inspired by her
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Assistant Police Chief James Reichschneider, Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Assistant Police Chief James Reichschneider, Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Assistant Police Chief James Reichschneider, here
mother's work as a community activist. And whereas in March twenty fourteen, President
here on behalf of Chief Andrew Binder and the Police Department. I'm joined by Fire here on behalf of Chief Andrew Binder and the Police Department. I'm joined by Fire on behalf of Chief Andrew Binder and the Police Department. I'm joined by Fire Chief
Barack Obama proclaimed March thirty-first as Cesar Chavez Day, and in twenty nineteen,
Chief Blackshire, as well as Technical Services Director Nicole Frazier, and our Communication Chief Blackshire, as well as Technical Services Director Nicole Frazier, and our Communication Blackshire, as well as Technical Services Director Nicole Frazier, and our Communication Center Manager Lindsay Moore. I'm here to speak to the proclamation honoring National Center Manager Lindsay Moore. I'm here to speak to the proclamation honoring National Center Manager Lindsay Moore. I'm here to speak to the proclamation honoring National
California named April tenth as Dolores Huerta Day. And in March twenty twenty-two, the
Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Palo Alto City Council voted to annually celebrate these two iconic leaders. And whereas
Police officers and firefighters are often referred to as first responders. And if that Police officers and firefighters are often referred to as first responders. And if that Police officers and firefighters are often referred to as first responders. And if that
both Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta have received the Presidential Medal of Freedom
is true, I would say that our dispatchers are really the first responders. Because is true, I would say that our dispatchers are really the first responders. Because is true, I would say that our dispatchers are really the first responders. Because
because through self-sacrifice, a commitment to nonviolence, and their spirituality, Cesar
before the first cop, the first firefighter, the first paramedic arrives on scene, a dispatcher before the first cop, the first firefighter, the first paramedic arrives on scene, a dispatcher before the first cop, the first firefighter, the first paramedic arrives on scene, a dispatcher
Chavez and Dolores Huerta championed a social justice movement that changed our nation.
has already performed a critical task to get us there. A dispatcher can be counted has already performed a critical task to get us there. A dispatcher can be counted has already performed a critical task to get us there. A dispatcher can be counted
And now therefore, the City of Palo Alto hereby honors and recognizes Cesar Chavez
upon to answer the phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of whether upon to answer the phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of whether upon to answer the phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of whether
and Dolores Huerta on this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty five, and encourages
it's a holiday or a weekend. They walk people through CPR, or even on rare occasions, it's a holiday or a weekend. They walk people through CPR, or even on rare occasions, childbirth it's a holiday or a weekend. They walk people through CPR, or even on rare occasions, childbirth
celebration through education and community service.
childbirth over the telephone. They get us the critical information we need to respond over the telephone. They get us the critical information we need to respond quickly to over the telephone. They get us the critical information we need to respond quickly to
Thank you. That was wonderful.
quickly to the scenes of a crime, a fire, or a medical emergency. Simply put, they're the scenes of a crime, a fire, or a medical emergency. Simply put, they're a lifeline the scenes of a crime, a fire, or a medical emergency. Simply put, they're a lifeline
Okay, we're not going to move along to any agenda.
a lifeline to this community and an invaluable part of our public safety team. I'm very grateful to this community and an invaluable part of our public safety team. I'm very grateful to this community and an invaluable part of our public safety team. I'm very grateful for the work that our public safety dispatchers do, and for the opportunity to call attention for the work that our public safety dispatchers do, and for the opportunity to call attention for the work that our public safety dispatchers do, and for the opportunity to call attention to that work tonight. Thank you. to that work tonight. Thank you. to that work tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a number of us have been in the Communication Center and see Thank you. I think a number of us have been in the Communication Center and see Thank you. I think a number of us have been in the Communication Center and see the work that goes on constantly, even when we're standing around there. And I also know the work that goes on constantly, even when we're standing around there. And I also know the work that goes on constantly, even when we're standing around there. And I also know that you're very much looking forward to the new Communication Center, where they can that you're very much looking forward to the new Communication Center, where they can that you're very much looking forward to the new Communication Center, where they can actually be even more effective, and not to mention efficient. So thank you for that, actually be even more effective, and not to mention efficient. So thank you for that, actually be even more effective, and not to mention efficient. So thank you for that, and to the fire, and also all of the folks that just do a fantastic job every day keeping and to the fire, and also all of the folks that just do a fantastic job every day keeping and to the fire, and also all of the folks that just do a fantastic job every day keeping us safe. us safe. us safe. So we. So we. So we. We can, I'll present this to you in just a little bit. We can, I'll present this to you in just a little bit. We can, I'll present this to you in just a little bit. Anybody else want to comment? Anybody else want to comment? Anybody else want to comment? Okay, let's move to the second proclamation. Okay, let's move to the second proclamation. Okay, let's move to the second proclamation.
So our second proclamation is honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation So our second proclamation is honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation So our second proclamation is honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five. Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five. Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five.
Councilwoman Lithgow Hames, what would be that? Councilwoman Lithgow Hames, what would be that? Councilwoman Lithgow Hames, what would be that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Palo Alto Police Departments, four animal Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Palo Alto Police Departments, four animal Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Palo Alto Police Departments, four animal control officers work diligently seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days control officers work diligently seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days control officers work diligently seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to protect the welfare of the animals and wildlife of the Palo Alto community, as a year to protect the welfare of the animals and wildlife of the Palo Alto community, as a year to protect the welfare of the animals and wildlife of the Palo Alto community, as well as providing animal control services to the City of Los Altos and the town of well as providing animal control services to the City of Los Altos and the town of well as providing animal control services to the City of Los Altos and the town of Los Altos Hills. And whereas the animal control officers, sometimes a great risk to their Los Altos Hills. And whereas the animal control officers, sometimes a great risk to their Los Altos Hills. And whereas the animal control officers, sometimes a great risk to their own personal safety, serve and protect the welfare of pets and wildlife against injury, own personal safety, serve and protect the welfare of pets and wildlife against injury, own personal safety, serve and protect the welfare of pets and wildlife against injury, disease, abuse, and starvation while enforcing California state law and the municipal codes disease, abuse, and starvation while enforcing California state law and the municipal codes disease, abuse, and starvation while enforcing California state law and the municipal codes of three jurisdictions. And whereas the animal control officers protect the public from of three jurisdictions. And whereas the animal control officers protect the public from diseases of three jurisdictions. And whereas the animal control officers protect the public from diseases diseases like rabies, investigate all animal bites of other animals and humans, permit like rabies, investigate all animal bites of other animals and humans, permit and monitor like rabies, investigate all animal bites of other animals and humans, permit and monitor and monitor dangerous animals, issue animal-related permits, conduct premise inspections for properties dangerous animals, issue animal-related permits, conduct premise inspections for properties dangerous animals, issue animal-related permits, conduct premise inspections for properties permitted to have livestock, conduct criminal investigations in cases involving animal permitted to have livestock, conduct criminal investigations in cases involving animal permitted to have livestock, conduct criminal investigations in cases involving animal welfare, welfare, and help support the Police Department by safely containing potentially dangerous welfare, and help support the Police Department by safely containing potentially dangerous and help support the Police Department by safely containing potentially dangerous animals animals during tactical operations. And whereas the animal control officers regularly work animals during tactical operations. And whereas the animal control officers regularly work during tactical operations. And whereas the animal control officers regularly work alongside alongside and in close collaboration with staff from Pets in Need, who operate the city's alongside and in close collaboration with staff from Pets in Need, who operate the city's and in close collaboration with staff from Pets in Need, who operate the city's animal animal shelter. And whereas the animal control officers are deeply involved with the community, animal shelter. And whereas the animal control officers are deeply involved with the community, shelter. And whereas the animal control officers are deeply involved with the community, including including partnering with local businesses in hosting monthly pet pantries at the Buena including partnering with local businesses in hosting monthly pet pantries at the Buena partnering with local businesses in hosting monthly pet pantries at the Buena Vista Mobile Vista Mobile Home Park and organizing pet supply drives during the holidays to help Vista Mobile Home Park and organizing pet supply drives during the holidays to help Home Park and organizing pet supply drives during the holidays to help support pet owners support pet owners in need. Now therefore, Ed Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, support pet owners in need. Now therefore, Ed Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, in need. Now therefore, Ed Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens entire City Council, does hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Palo Alto of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty to observe the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as National five, as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and join in honoring our five, as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and join in honoring our Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and join in honoring our animal control officers animal control officers and recognizing them for their diligence and professionalism. animal control officers and recognizing them for their diligence and professionalism. and recognizing them for their diligence and professionalism.
Thank you, and. Thank you, and. Thank you, and.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames, Mayor Lowing, Council. Again, I'm still Assistant Police Councilmember Lithgow Hames, Mayor Lowing, Council. Again, I'm still Assistant Police Councilmember Lithgow Hames, Mayor Lowing, Council. Again, I'm still Assistant Police Chief James Reichschneider, still here on behalf of Police Chief Andrew Binder and Chief James Reichschneider, still here on behalf of Police Chief Andrew Binder and Chief James Reichschneider, still here on behalf of Police Chief Andrew Binder and the Police Department. I'm joined by two of our animal control officers. I'm here to the Police Department. I'm joined by two of our animal control officers. I'm here to the Police Department. I'm joined by two of our animal control officers. I'm here to speak to the proclamation honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. speak to the proclamation honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. speak to the proclamation honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. I'm glad they could be here to be recognized by the Council for the work they do. The I'm glad they could be here to be recognized by the Council for the work they do. The scope I'm glad they could be here to be recognized by the Council for the work they do. The scope of their work exceeds what most of us might assume. On any given day, they could scope of their work exceeds what most of us might assume. On any given day, they could of their work exceeds what most of us might assume. On any given day, they could be tasked be tasked with reuniting a lost pet with an owner, rescuing a sick beaver, assisting be tasked with reuniting a lost pet with an owner, rescuing a sick beaver, assisting with reuniting a lost pet with an owner, rescuing a sick beaver, assisting in a SWAT operation,
Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, here at five thirty P. M. And with the clerk, please call the roll.
Of course, Councilmember Rektal.
Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Mayor Lowing.
Here.
Councilmember Burton.
Here.
For the record, all present.
Thank you. Tonight, to start off, we have actually three proclamations that we're
in a SWAT operation, or tangling with an ornery snake that's made its way into an in a SWAT operation, or tangling with an ornery snake that's made its way into an
going to read for individually, of course, for various events. Do you want to announce
or tangling with an ornery snake that's made its way into an office or a home. But whatever
the first one?
Sure. So our first proclamation is a proclamation honoring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five.
City clerk?
Sure. So our first proclamation is a proclamation honoring National Public Safety
office or a home. But whatever task they are performing, they consistently do it with office or a home. But whatever task they are performing, they consistently do it with
Telecommunicators Week, April thirteenth through nineteen twenty twenty five.
And I think we have staff in chambers to listen and receive the proclamation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
There we go. So why don't I read? And then you can come up and respond. All right, great. So this
task they are performing, they consistently do it with professionalism, compassion, and
is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency
professionalism, compassion, and bravery, and the safety of both our two- and four-legged
occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to
professionalism, compassion, and bravery, and the safety of both our two- and four-legged
the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained
bravery, and the safety of both our two- and four-legged residents in mind. I'm very proud
from citizens who telephone the City of Palo Alto Communications Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement
residents in mind. I'm very proud of our animal control officers and the work they residents in mind. I'm very proud of our animal control officers and the work they
and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, provided. And whereas public safety dispatchers of a city of communications, communication centers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment
of our animal control officers and the work they do, and I thank the Council for taking
of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during performance of their job in this past year. Now therefore, I, Ed
do, and I thank the Council for taking the time to recognize that work. do, and I thank the Council for taking the time to recognize that work.
Lowing, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Palo Alto to observe the week of April thirteenth
the time to recognize that work.
through nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and join in honoring our animal control officers and recognizing them for their diligence and professionalism. Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much. Thank you, and. And third, city clerk? Oh, yeah, we definitely want to do that. Want to do that before? And third, city clerk? Oh, yeah, we definitely want to do that. Want to do that before? Great. And third, city clerk? Oh, yeah, we definitely want to do that. Want to do that before? Great.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames, Mayor Lowing, Council. Again, I'm still Assistant Police Chief James Reichschneider, still here on behalf of Police Chief Andrew Binder and the Police Department. I'm joined by two of our animal control officers. I'm here to speak to the proclamation honoring National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. I'm glad they could be here to be recognized by the Council for the work they do. The
Great.
scope of their work exceeds what most of us might assume. On any given day, they could be tasked with reuniting a lost pet with an owner, rescuing a sick beaver, assisting in a SWAT operation, or tangling with an ornery snake that's made its way into an office or a home. But whatever task they are performing, they consistently do it with professionalism, compassion, and bravery, and the safety of both our two- and four-legged residents in mind. I'm very proud of our animal control officers and the work they do, and I thank the Council for taking the time to recognize that work.
Great, thank you very much. And third, city clerk? Oh, yeah, we definitely want to do that. Want to do that before? Great.
All right. And the item three is a proclamation celebrating Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta.
And Vice Mayor Venker is going to be reading that today.
Whereas Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, which later became the United Farm Workers Association. And whereas they understood the importance of coalition building and worked in conjunction with other farm labor movements to make the United Farm Workers Association a reality. They worked to call for better conditions for farm workers and their families. They took on table grape growers who had been exploiting farm workers and began a nationwide grape boycott that led to the first farm worker union contracts. And whereas their mission was to reclaim dignity, fair wages, medical coverage, benefits, and humane living conditions for hundreds of thousands of people. And whereas the popular phrase, si se puede, is attributed to their activism and civil rights work, it was Dolores Huerta who first said the words, which translate to in English to, yes, I can, or yes, we can, as she rallied support for worker and immigrant rights. And whereas through fierce advocacy, Dolores Huerta was instrumental in securing the California Agricultural Labor Relations Act of nineteen seventy-five, a first-in-the-nation law that extended collective bargaining rights to farm workers. And whereas Cesar Chavez drew attention to environmental issues, such as the use of chemical pesticides that endangered the lives of not only farm workers but also consumers. And whereas their catalyst to act came from their early introductions to inequities with Cesar Chavez, born on March thirty-first, nineteen twenty-seven, in Yuma, Arizona, and later moved to California after his parents lost their farm during the Great Depression and became migrant workers. Dolores Huerta was born on April tenth, nineteen thirty, in Dawson, New Mexico. At a young age, she was exposed to the hardships that her community faced, but she was greatly inspired by her mother's work as a community activist. And whereas in March twenty-fourteen, President Barack Obama proclaimed March thirty-first as Cesar Chavez Day, and in twenty nineteen, California named April tenth as Dolores Huerta Day. And in March twenty-twenty-two, the Palo Alto City Council voted to annually celebrate these two iconic leaders. And whereas both Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta have received the Presidential Medal of Freedom because through self-sacrifice, a commitment to nonviolence, and their spirituality, Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta championed a social justice movement that changed our nation. And now therefore, the City of Palo Alto hereby honors and recognizes Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta on this fourteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, and encourages celebration through education and community service.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Okay, we're not going to move along to any agenda changes, additions, or deletions?
We have no changes, Mayor.
Okay, so we're now going to move to public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
We have three requests to speak. Our first speaker is Jill A.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jill Asher, and I'm a board member of the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation. I hope that you will join me in celebrating arts, culture, and creativity this month of April. At the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation, we believe that arts are essential to a thriving and economically vibrant and diverse community. The foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that expands the reach and impact of the Palo Alto Art Center through fundraising and advocacy. We are a group of active community volunteers committed to providing arts in our community. Next slide. Today, we would like to highlight how the Palo Alto Art Center contributes to the economic development of Palo Alto, one of the council's priorities. This is an image of the Art Center's Holiday Studio Sale, an event supported every year through the foundation. Next slide. Or two slides. That's the picture. Next slide. The Palo Alto Art Center's Facility Rental Program and our class programs for kids and teens and adults have generated nearly one point three million dollars in gross revenue thus far this fiscal year, and most of the classes and camps are fully enrolled with significant wait lists. Next slide. Community events like the Great Glass Pumpkin Patch and the ACGA City, I'm sorry, Clay and Glass Festival in Palo Alto has tens of thousands of people to brings tens of thousands of people to Palo Alto every year. These are people who dine in our restaurants and shop in our communities after visiting our events and contributing to the economic vitality of our city. Next slide, please. Our call to action is to encourage you to save the date for the twenty twenty-five ACGA Clay and Class Glass Festival in Palo Alto at the Art Center on July twelfth and July thirteenth. This is a free event and features the works of clay and glass artists for in glass for sale, food trucks, and art activities. Next slide, please. Many programs at the events have shared that we've shared would not have been possible without the support of the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation, and we appreciate the support of the City of Palo Alto as we partner with you to provide meaningful and relevant art programs in the community. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Our next speaker is Rogan S. Roger S. Sorry.
You got a new nickname tonight, Roger.
First of all, thank you all for serving, and it's a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate it. Roger Smith, been in town sixty years. I was a founder of the Palo Alto Police Foundation and the Friends of the Palo Alto Parks. So tonight, I just wanted to talk about one of the great startups in our town. Years ago, I think thirteen years ago, Alinka Ferrel came to our board and said, I have an idea to build a playground for anyone that can come. And she has a daughter that couldn't go to the regular playgrounds. So she worked really hard. Lee Levy, who many of you know was a former mayor, worked closely with her. And anyway, we started working on that and and Pat, I'll point out, Pat Burton, his wife for early folks, Joe Semidion got involved. Anyway, we raised three point eight million, and ten years ago, we opened the park. And so being being smart, a fellow told me, is coming up with the right idea, which we did. Being brilliant is to come up with the right idea at the right time. We were all patting ourselves on the back, and none of us said, wait a minute, we're going to have three hundred and fifty, four hundred kids come into the park, and we have these one bathroom with two stalls. So we should have got on that earlier. Then, what, five years later, the pickleball people came, so there's another two hundred and fifty people. And we still have the two, excuse my French here, crummy bathrooms. So what, to be real blunt, we thought by a gift of three point eight million to the city, they'd have the funds and the time to bring up the bathrooms to standards. Tonight, I'm sorry, Saturday, we have the Magical Bridge ten-year anniversary, starts at ten o'clock and goes to seven thirty. And my daughter Jenny just donated the Happy Hunt that they just put in today. And so it's going to be a big fun event. And so please come. The Palo Alto Park Department assures me we're going to have a couple porta-potties to handle all the rest of the people. So thank you, and I really would like us to work together to get that done. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Roberta A.
My name is Roberta Alquist. I have lived here for over sixty years. I live in the downtown area and that area. Most of my neighbors, with the exception of a Navajo Indian family and their four kids who were moved from housing that was torn down and replaced by office buildings, they were the only family out of all of these people who were able to not leave Palo Alto. They went to an Arasudero apartment complex. And in my time here, the only low-income project really that was built during the seventies was something called Webster Woods, which is now no longer really low income if you take a look at the price. The Palo Alto Tenant Union was pretty responsible for getting that large block building of low, moderate-income housing built. We live in two different worlds here, divided by a freeway. East Palo Alto is one world, and Palo Alto is another. What's been built in my neighborhood since are expensive condos, a large bank, and expensive apartments, no low-income housing. We use the term affordable housing. Everybody says they're for it, but we're talking about extremely low-income housing, and we just don't have any here. It's very expensive to live here, and we've done a couple of informal surveys. If you ask people who work for the City of Palo Alto that can't afford to live here. I have three points I want to make. Over the last twenty, thirty years, no low-income housing, rental housing, has been built, but rather expensive condos, offices, more offices, empty offices. And now they're talking about two token below-market condos in a ten-unit place on Town and Country. I think that's shameful. The second point I want to make is that with a group of coalition of group of people, we have attempted over the last seven years to get the city to address the Convention on the Education on the ending discrimination against women, SEDAW. Seven years it's been that we've come before you. And where where is it? We were told within two years, we were told three years, went to various committees. Still, nothing's been done. The third issue is homelessness. There are several women and a couple of men in addition occasionally who help a group of homeless people. I'd like to finish my word, please, since everybody else spent about five minutes. We'd like to see some shelters in the downtown area beyond ten or twelve units for people to live in.
Please finish your sentence, your time is up.
When will you deliver on these requests? Twenty years?
That concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. So see if anybody has any of those. And to the public, we're using a new system tonight, so hopefully everything works. But if we go on or off, that'd be cool for that. So let's see. Councilmember Venker?
Thank you. I wanted to share, I've been bragging about our city a couple of times in the last week. First was this morning on an earthday.org panel, I had the pleasure of talking about our climate and sustainability programs alongside the CEO of the Greater Washington DC Region Clean Cities Coalition and a council member from Leeds in the UK. And we were comparing and contrasting the various progress we've made and the plans we have to make more. And so it was a great chance to show the great accomplishments of the city and also learn from others. And so I thank staff for supporting me on that. Also, in this time of great division, I'm happy to report our relationship with our sibling city in Bloomington, Indiana is strong. There was a there's a twenty-year city council member there. He's been off council now for about a year and a half and must be having withdrawal because he started a podcast where he talks about city business. And he interviewed me about sibling cities and also our council, how we work, what our system of government is, and how to compare and contrast that. So that was last Thursday, and you can access either of those if you have any interest. And then I lastly wanted to report on last week's Policy and Services Committee meeting. Just three items I wanted to share. One was that the we had a city auditor presentation of the Emergency Preparedness and Wildfire Audit Report. The second is that we had an update from Townsend and Recommendations Regarding State and Federal Legislation, Executive Orders, and Other Regulatory and Funding Circumstances. And I just wanted to lift up one thing. There were three twenty twenty-four grants from last year for which dispersment is somewhat uncertain now. A couple of them were Department of Transportation grants, the largest for sixteen and a half million dollars for natural gas distribution and infrastructure, and another smaller for Safe Streets for All, an implementation project. Based on Townsend's conversations with the Department of Transportation, they suggest some confidence that they might still come through, you know, once the agency reviews concludes. So that may be all right, and they're watching them. But there's a smaller one from the Department of Energy related to it's a it's an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant related to fleet modernization that appears to be at greater risk, given that that program is less aligned with the current administration's funding priorities. And finally, I wanted to report that we did discuss city council's interview selection process for boards, commissions, and committees, and a recommendation will be coming to this body so that we can have a policy and not need to discuss it each time we do a border commission interview. So that's the update from PNS.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. I just wanted to share a couple of developments with first with MTC. And it also relates to both VTA and Caltrain, which is the consideration of a regional tax measure for support of transit agency operations throughout the Bay Area. Previously, last year, based on the legislation at the time that was proposed, the VTA had opted to not participate. But a number have of developments and and positive developments in the in the characteristics of the proposed legislation this year have opened the door toward VTA considering participation. And that was very welcomed by MTC. What's really changed is that there's no component pushing for consolidation of agencies in the measure, but rather coordination of fares and and schedules and marketing. And on top of that, the chances of the measure passing regionally are better because it will only be either three counties or five counties and not all the nine Bay Area counties with allowing counties, even though they're the smallest population, they get the least benefit from some of this and have the least voter support for such a measure. And then a real importance for particularly VTA is what has been called return to source, which is how the different jurisdictions that contribute funds through their their the sales taxes in their counties, how those funds would be returning to those counties to a high degree. And and lastly, there's a very good chance that the regional measure would actually be a citizen initiative. And in that case, it would only require a fifty-plus one percent voter approval. And so in the coming weeks, that's going to be a very serious, important decision that VTA will need to make. Caltrain, without funding from that measure, would need to come up with filling their operations gap from the three member counties. And then, as I mentioned last time, the the VTA strike of the ATU Union was ruled to not been legal. And we just have had a appellate court confirmation of that. And and then, at the same time, VTA has achieved very positive tentative agreements on on new contracts with our other three unions. And so we're hoping that we'll move forward on the AT Union going forward. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. One, last week, I had a very enjoyable and productive sort of comments that I delivered to the Chamber of Commerce with about fifty people. And they asked me a lot of productive, hard questions that I'm going to hand off to all of you to solve. But I thought they were very engaged and very informative and stayed on afterwards to have a lot of discussion as well. So that was quite effective. Secondly, next week on Thursday will be the second mayor's press and community briefing at the library at four o'clock as as we did last time. And this time, the theme will be housing and cover a number of areas, including, of course, affordable housing, as always, the downtown area plan, San Antonio area plan, any, you know, pipeline and or, you know, new developments in that regard and and many others. So we hope we get a lot of folks that come and take a look or plug in at least to YouTube to watch it. We may have Channel twenty-six live by then, not sure. So that is next Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Councilmember Luthcott-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to recognize that there are members of the Palo Alto Youth Council here in the audience, attending our meetings with more frequency and getting a, you know, insider view of what actually goes on here, and we appreciate your involvement in your service. Second, as the Parks and Recreation Liaison, I just wanted to report out that that commission had a retreat last Friday for about four hours. It was held at Foothills Park, and as I drove in, I couldn't help but reflect upon the important work the city undertook some years ago to open that park up to nonresidents. It was we had the retreat at the Interpretative Center, which I confess I had never been inside of before. And it's an incredible resource. Obviously, the park is a very special resource, and it was a wonderful opportunity to just soak soak that up a bit. Their retreat covered the good work that they Their retreat covered the good work that they've done in. Over the course of the past year, focusing on optimizing resources to offer diverse recreation opportunities and promote community health and wellness. The second thing they were focusing on is advancing equity access and inclusion for programs, parks and open space. And the third was to enhance biodiversity, environmental sustainability and climate change resilience. Because the PRC's jurisdictional purview touches so many different city departments and council priorities. They've, they focus on doing much of their work through ad hoc committees, which seems like is working for them. They have seven ad hocks or had seven ad hocks over the last year, working on any number of things. And I was really impressed by the, the breadth and depth of their conversations. And look forward to what's coming from the PRC in the coming year. And finally, I want to point out, not that it's mine to point out, the city manager may be pointing this out, I apologize if I'm stepping on you. City Manager Shakata, but simply that the Tall Tree Awards sponsored by the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce and the Palo Alto Weekly are happening this week. On the 17th at the JCC. Starting at 5:30 is a networking reception and then the awards presentations begin at seven. And these folks have chosen to honor Achieve Kids as the outstanding nonprofit Reverend Coloma Smith for the Outstanding Professional. Rich Green for Outstanding Citizen Volunteer, Altamasa Cemetery and Funeral Home for the Outstanding Business. And a special recognition for Joe Semidi and Anna Eshu. And so I think we all know that this is. A really special part of what the city manages to do every year to recognize the true tallest trees in our community, whether individuals or businesses. So I hope to see a lot of folks out at that event. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes council member comments. Let's move to consent calendar.
Mayor, if I may. We had some confusion with public comment and we do have one additional speaker, if you'd allow.
In terms of time? What was the confusion?
Just confusion on submitting a card. It's one of the students of. From the Palo Alto Youth Council.
Okay, fine, yes.
Thank you. So our final speaker for public comment on items not on the agenda is Annika.
All right, can I start? Good morning, everyone, or good evening, I guess. My name is Annika Deshpande and I'm a member of the Palo Alto Youth Council. Or PAYC. At PAYC, we organize events that engage youth in community activities and programs. So we wanted to share with you guys our progress from this month. In March, we spoke about our issue census where we looked at what issues teens are most concerned about. And we found that a lot of teens are concerned with bike safety. So in response to this, we posted about the city's plans on bike safety on our social media account. To promote education and awareness throughout Palo Alto Youth. Now. On May 2nd, we're also hosting the music festival called Palapalooza in collaboration with the Teen Advisory Board. We will have food activities and a lot of other, and a lot of local music and live music. So tell any teens you know to come our way. And lastly, we're making a fun song about everything that you guys have been up to. So basically, we're making a song about what the city of Palo Alto City Council has been up to. And we're making a song because we have a lot of talented musicians on our team. And we also thought it would be a fun way to engage youth in what the city council is up to. So if anyone has any questions on what we're doing, wants to collaborate with us, has opportunities for us or wants to help in any way, please feel free to reach out. Thank you so much. Sorry for the confusion.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yeah. Well, I want to point out Wednesday night, there's going to be a quiet zone meeting in the front of City Hall. So anyone who's interested in omitting the train horns, please attend that. Six, six PM, Wednesday, the 16th.
We're going in reverse here, folks.
Yeah, I want to ask. It seems that these mics don't, aren't quite as loud as the previous and we need to pull them closer to us to hear, just want everybody to know.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some adjustments we have to make here. Okay, now we're going to go to city manager comments.
Sorry, Mayor, I think we're actually at consent calendar.
It's been five minutes. I thought we had finished that. What I meant to say was the consent calendar. Items four through 10, so.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, hearing no, no votes, I will go ahead and take the roll call. Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yes.
And Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
No, I'm up. All right, thank you, Mayor. If I could get the city clerk's assistance with a few slides. And thank you to council members for the announcements. Actually, I don't think we have much overlap, but nonetheless appreciate your reinforcement of some of the upcoming events. Next slide, please. All right, a couple that you didn't mention are perhaps just for general awareness that we have two parks that are either open or on the verge of opening further. Ramos Park, which I believe you see in this photo now has a new playground as well as additional amenities open to the public. Bowler Park also is now open to the public. I believe the playground is, oh, let's see, I hope it, we hope to open the playground in the coming week following a safety inspection. The signage has been posted. Hopefully that caveat will no longer be applicable within the next couple of days. And then finally, as Mr. Smith pointed out, Magical Bridge Playground celebrating its 10th anniversary this Saturday. So all in all, a number of new amenities or, or celebrating amenities around town. These are fantastic play structures if you haven't seen them yet, as well as the playgrounds themselves. Tempted to try to climb in myself, but that was probably not be a good idea, only for the young, not the young at heart. Next slide, please. All right, and also noting a few public input opportunities here. Vice Mayor mentioned at last week's Policy and Services Committee meeting discussion related to emergency preparedness. And we have two specific plan documents that are now open for public comment. One is our Emergency Operations Plan. That's a citywide really framework for how the city's response or prepares and responds to emergencies. And second, specifically related to Foothills Fire Management. And both documents are available on our website here, citipaloalto.org. Or actually, excuse me. WWW.PaloAlto.gov slash Emergency Plan Public Comment. Again, we've got a community message here on our homepage and information on these plans that really do provide an overview. Of Preparedness and Response Activities. These are two specific products that are office of Emergency Services takes the lead in preparing for the city. Next slide, please. Also a reminder for community members that the Architectural Review Board recruitment is ongoing with the deadline of April 30th. So architects, landscape architects, building designers or other design professionals encouraged to apply. And this is also on our website, paloalto.gov slash BCRecruit. Next slide, please. Then just simply looking forward to a few upcoming meetings. Next week on the 21st of April, council will be having your semi-annual study session with the Independent Police Auditor. Then two action items, one related to the Cumberley Master Planning Effort and Community Polling. That's upcoming and the second item, the scope of services for the synthetic and natural turf study. Then the next meeting will be on May 5th where you'll receive the transmittal of the FY fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. Really kicking off the public discussion of the upcoming budget. Then a study session on the use of gas, natural gas or methane cap in trade revenue. And then finally, an action item related to proposed development at 4075 El Camino Way. On the 12th of May, studies session on the budget, really the first substantive discussion for the full council on the budget. Then two action items related to the El Camino Real Housing Focus Area. And also ADU accessory dwelling unit ordinance adjustments. And then a number of items looking at May 19th and beyond. This is just a partial list of issues that will be coming forward to the city council before the end of June. And with that, Mayor, that completes my comments. Back to you.
Mayor, if I may interrupt one more time, I just wanted to note for the record, since we skimmed past the consent calendar so quickly that there was no request to speak and no hands were raised for consent calendar items for public comment.
Great. Shall we go back to calling the order? Thank you for backstopping me there. Why not? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, one quick announcement, I forgot, or at least a reminder to the community that Third Thursday is this Thursday from 6 to 9 PM on Calav. And just a quick shout out, we got five city orgs that are participating, utilities, urban forestry, urban forestry, transportation, zero waste, sustainability. And it's the theme this month is Earth Week. So should be a fun event for everybody who's not going to Tall Tree.
Yeah, that is an overlap, but thank you for bringing that up. Okay, we are running about 15 minutes ahead. So I'm going to suggest that maybe we get going on this item and think about a break later when we're a little bit more exhausted. So let's go ahead with the first agenda item, which is. New parking structure, preferred options. For downtown 37, 375 Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, Vice Mayor Vinker and Council. I'm Holly Boyd, Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm joined this evening with Gloria Yu, Senior Engineer from Public Work, as well as our project team members. Ken Hayes and Terry Murphy from the Hayes Group Architects and Gordon Knowles from Watchu Design. Next slide. So tonight we are here for, for council to review and provide direction on various parking garage concept options. Noted here on this slide is the staff recommendation. But first I wanted to give a little history and background on how we got to this moment. Next slide. So this slide shows a summary of past council actions for the downtown parking garage project. Starting in June 2014, where council adopted the 2014 Council Infrastructure Plan, which included the downtown parking garage project. In December 2016, council approved the parking lot D at the corner of Hamilton and Waverly as site for the new garage. Also approved the design contract with Watchu Design. April 17, April 2017, reviewed the garage options and approved the concept design. In February 2019, council certified the EIR and placed the project on hold pending a strategy review on downtown parking management. And then fast forward a few years, December 2023, council directed staff to resume work on a new parking structure. And then December of last year, council approved the design contract with Watchu. With the first step to consider options for including housing, which is why we are here tonight. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it over to Ken Hayes to review the options with you.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, Vice Mayor Vinker, members of the council, Ken Hayes with, with Hayes Group Architects. We've been working with staff and Watchu Design on opportunities for incorporating affordable housing into the Lot D Garage. And this is the site, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It has about 29,000 square feet. There are 86 existing parking stalls on site. To the left or to the west of the site is the AT&amp;T Building, which is 60 plus feet tall. On the south side is Hamilton Avenue, on the east side, Waverly, we know that. And then to the north are some one and two story commercial buildings and kind of backyards and alleys. The program, we studied two options. It was the direction to look at a Waverly option and a Dogleg option. The program for both options is essentially identical, five floors of housing over ground floor. The project will be 68 feet tall to get five floors over ground floor amenity space and back of house. The amenity space would consist of resident services, possibly a meeting room, a manager's office, toilet facilities. Bike parking and laundry facilities for the, for the building. Excuse me. Next slide. So the Waverly, the Waverly portion occupies about the force, the first 46 feet in from Waverly. There are three sub options under that, 1A through 1C. And those sub options really have to do with constructability, sort of sequencing. As well as how we can share vertical circulation stairs and elevators and possibly lobbies between the garage and the housing and whether that makes sense. Next slide is the Dogleg, the next slide is the Dogleg section and it's the same kind of, kind of operation. Option 3A through 3C, what opportunities are there for sharing vertical circulation, et cetera? So next slide, I'll walk you through the. It looks like we've lost the color, except for the stairs. All right, well, this is option 1A, Waverly. The residences and the garage are fully separated, including the stairs, elevator and entries. In this case, the entry to the residential would be off of a plaza on the Waverly side, on the north side of the project. We're creating a paseo there, if you recall, was in the garage approval from 2017 or whenever that was. And so that would be with the residential entry and lobby completely separate from the garage entry, which would be on the corner. Well, a stair would be on the corner of Waverly and Hamilton, but the main entry for the garage would be more central at the end of the paseo that you see here in the light red. This picks up 163 net new stalls, net of parking required for the residential and net of parking that's existing on the lot. Next slide. I'm sorry, the color's not coming through. There are 15 units in this option on five floors. We're showing one, two and three bedrooms, but the count can vary. We think this is a good location for residential with eyes on the street, access to views and light. And the residence can be built separately from the garage. Next slide. This is option 1B and the residences and the garage share stairs, elevator and entry. So in this case, the main entry to both the garage and the residences is on the Waverly, Hamilton corner, elevator and stair. Next, this gets 168 new stalls, as it says there. We, again, 15 apartments and whatever configuration we want in terms of bedrooms. Again, a good location for housing and the residences can be built separately from the garage, except the elevator and stair that forms the garage circulation would have to be built with the garage. Next slide. This is the last option for the Waverly. It's built, the residents will be built on top of a podium. The residences in the garage would share stairs, elevators and entries. In this case, the main entry for the project would be at the corner of Hamilton and, and Waverly. And that would be the entrance for both the garage and the residential component. 167 net new stalls. Next slide would get you the 15, 15 units. And again, we think it's a good location for, for housing. The podium, though, would have to be built with the garage. And then the, and then the residences separately later. So it raises the question of what do you do with that podium until the residences are built? So not sure what that, what that means yet. Next slide is just the garage as it, not quite as it was, but we get 243 spaces on the garage. I would encourage the council to consider active ground floor uses here along the Waverly frontage to both conceal some of the parking. So you're going to lose some spaces, but to also kind of continue that ribbon of retail frontage along Waverly. That's not been shown here. Next slide is option 3A. Now, this is the first Dogleg option, so that's taking the site on that back portion. The residences in the garage are fully. The residences in the garage are fully separated in this option, including the stairs and the elevator. The main entrance for the residential will be at the end of that passeo. And they'd be completely separate from the garage, whose entrance would be on the corner of Hamilton and, and Waverly. The 73 net new stalls, so quite a decrease in the number of stalls. However, on the next slide, you'll see that we have 25 units. And again, the unit count can change. We've just made assumptions on one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. The next slide would show you the, yeah, the units and the residential. We think that this is not an ideal location for your affordable housing. It, in my mind, it's kind of, it's in the backyard. It's sort of next to these alleys and the service areas of the commercial space. Limited views or no views and limited light and air. However, the residences can be built separately, completely separately from the garage in this option. The next option, option three B, the residences in the garage share a stair, but the entries are separate in this case. So the entry to the residential, again, at the end of the passeo. And the entry to the garage would be on the corner of Waverly and Hamilton in this option. We get to 83 net new stalls, 20. Next slide will show you the 25 units again. And the same concerns I have that I just mentioned in terms of not a great location, in my opinion, for, for residential. In this option, the residences must be built after the garage is built, since they share a stair in the left hand corner, upper left hand corner of the garage. Last option is option three C, which is the next slide. Thank you. And this is again, a podium option. So the residences are built on top of a podium. It allows you to have the garage go through and provide a little bit more parking on that ground floor. The residences in the garage do not share the stairs or the elevator. Main entrance for the residences, again, would be at the end of the passeo and the garage would be on the corner of Hamilton and, and Waverly. We get 85 net new stalls here. Next slide will show you again, 25 units, but that can go up or down depending on the size you want. But my, my opinion about not being a great place for residential persists on this. The podium would have to be built with the garage and then the units would be built later on top. So still the same issue of like, what do you do with that podium if the garage, if the residences don't proceed immediately? Next slide. So we're recommending with staff, option one A. And the benefits and disadvantages of all the options are just too numerous to talk about right in the presentation. So they were, they were in your packet. The benefits here are more parking compared to the dog leg option. So we get 163 parking spaces in option one A. We have residential on the street, which we think builds better community. Residential at the corner, better light, better views, better air circulation. It has more, this has the most residential floor area than the other Waverly options. We're about 15,000 square feet on this one and the lowest one has like 12.5. So you capture more, more residential floor area with this option. Other benefit is no connection to the garage, provides therefore floor to floor height flexibility. They're almost separate structures, or they are, provides better security with a separate lobby, separate circulation, separate stairs from the garage, provides clear definition of the development. If this is going to be built by somebody else, provides better construction, contract and ownership scope of work, sort of separation. You're going to build the garage separately from the residential. It could provide open space at the corner. So let's say the garage is built. What do you do with the corner until they're ready to build? It could be open space. We would need to think about what that wall of the garage looks like. This was also the preferred option by an affordable housing developer that we spoke with on the project. Just about done. The drawbacks include lower residential unit count, 15 versus 25 than the dog leg options, increased costs because you're duplicating elevators and stairs. And like I said, we got to think about how that blank wall of the garage would be addressed while we're waiting for the housing developer to build the affordable unit. So with that, I'll hand it back to staff to close, I think.
Yeah.
And then we can answer lots of questions.
Okay, so I'd like to end the presentation with staff's recommendation, which is to direct staff to proceed with preliminary design and an environmental review for option one A, which is a new 274 space parking garage featuring six levels of above ground parking with a reserved area to allow for future construction of affordable housing on the site with separate access on Waverly Street. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor, where you're available for any questions.
You kind of anticipated my first question, which was, do we want to get that specific tonight, which is what it says, action item? On the other hand, it said, you just said, review and provide direction in your comments. And it said, in the package, this is being presented for review and consideration, but we do want to get to a specific. And do you have a, a backup choice B or are you just so firmly in this option that you're not recommending any other options?
I think based on our discussions with staff and the design team, that we feel strongly about option one A is the best option to balance the housing and the parking need. Again, we discussed with Alta Housing about their preference for, as a housing developer. And they recommended option one A as well, but of course, we're willing to proceed with whatever council decides.
Okay, let's do our usual routine and do a question round. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back to comment comments. Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Boyd and Ms. Yu, Mr. Hayes for your presentations. Some technical questions. If I may, Mr. Mayor, direct this to Mr. Hayes and ask him to come up and answer. He, he asked.
That's fine.
Thank you. He, you, you indicated that with the Waverly and dog leg option Cs, the podium option for both. What do you do with the podium until the residences are built? And I confess, I don't know enough about construction to know what that will look like and therefore what the consequence of like this podium built awaiting the potential future of residents. What it'll look like, what's the harm of it? Why are you pointing that out as an issue?
So from the ground, there's probably not a big impact because that first floor is going to be 11 and a half or 12 feet in the air. All right. So you would build the entire garage, including the ground floor of the garage where the housing would go eventually. It may be more of a, you know, people looking down on it, but also a weatherproofing issue. There's going to be additional cost because you just can't leave this podium sitting there to the, exposed to the elements. You're going to have plumbing penetrations, electrical penetrations, mechanical penetrations, and you're going to have a concrete podium, concrete slab that is not waterproofed. And so you're going to have additional cost to waterproof that as well. So it may not be as much of a visual, you know, problem as it would be a kind of an extra cost. And a technical problem is how do you protect it? And we don't know for how long.
Councilmember, might it be helpful, since I suspect the term podium may not be too familiar to members of the public. Mr. Hayes, correct me if I'm describing it incorrectly, but it's basically a concrete slab that would be the roof of the first level, the ground floor of the garage, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you. So you could picture people sort of perched on it, hanging out. Not that we would condone that.
You wouldn't want them up there. How's that?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I get it. Thank you. My second question is a curiosity I want to put to staff. I noted in the staff report and you mentioned it again, that you consulted Alta Housing, one of our affordable housing partners, developer partners. You consulted them on this and I was like, hmm, that's interesting. I wonder how that choice was made. And just walk us through how that happened.
So staff contacted Alta Housing because council had previously selected them as the preferred developer.
On Lot T.
On Lot T.
Okay, so we're working with them on Lot T. Let's get their thoughts on Lot D.
With, if I might elaborate on that, with absolutely no expectation that they would be the preferred developer at Lot D, simply to get feedback from an affordable housing developer so that we would understand how they'd look at this as a potential development site.
Okay, great. That's exactly sort of what I was trying to read into or not read into that, that decision. That's it for me on technical questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lou.
Thank you. I also have a few technical questions, mostly likely directed to Mr. Hayes. Are there any notable cost differences we can predict at the outset for these different options? I know that's hard, but.
There were. Yeah, thank you for the question. So Watch You Design had put together some cost summaries in your packet, but just for the, just for the garage portion of the project. We, nobody has put any numbers together for the housing portion of the project. But the podium options, just the top of my head, would be the, the more expensive options because you're building essentially that ground floor of where the housing would eventually go. So the developer's only building five floors. The city would be building the ground, you know, the ground floor and that infrastructure. But if you want to know estimates, I would have to have Gordon kind of address that, but it was in the packet, I believe.
Packet page 170.
Sorry, I actually missed that. So I just want to confirm some details about option one B. So there was a second staircase in that narrow building and I guess that's just required by code. There's no flexibility there.
So because of the, the height and the number of, of units, we would need two stairs for the residential component, correct? And so one, one B has a shared stair and elevator for the whole building that would need to be built with the garage. That's the only way you're going to get in and out of the garage. And then the housing would have that stair that's over by what I'm calling the passeo, which is that separation between the other Waverly buildings and the garage. That would be just for the, that would be the second means of egress for the housing component.
Yeah. Okay. And so why would one A have more housing square footage than one B? It seems like one B should just be more efficient in not needing that.
Yeah. Great, great, great question. So one A, I believe is almost 15,000 square feet, where one B is just over 12.5. If you look at the second sheet of one B, well, look at the, well, you don't have what I have in front of you. It's because of how the elevator, if you have to. It's, it's how the elevator and stair encroach into. So if you, if you look at the elevator and stair there, they're further to the Waverly side of the garage than if you look at one A, which is two slides back. So one A, in fact, moves the elevator. So the elevator for the, for the garage is at the end of the passeo. So we're able to wrap the housing around the corner some. And so we pick up, you know, 500 square feet per floor. That's basically it.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you elaborate or maybe staff could also elaborate on some of the, what you mentioned on having an active street frontage on the ground floor and what, if any major constraints there are in terms of cost, building codes, things like that?
So I think it's a good idea to have ground floor active frontage. And if it's, if it's not just going to be a parking garage, you know, the parking garage originally had some active street frontage along Waverly so that we had, you know, but let's just call it retail, okay? Along Waverly to hide the parking and provide pedestrian interest and just continue that ribbon along Waverly Street. The, if it's all housing, I would propose putting those amenity spaces down there on the ground floor. You're going to need them anyway. So we'd have, you know, potential meeting room. Now, whether that's available just to the affordable housing component or whether that's a public meeting room, I don't know. You're going to have to have the manager's office. You're going to have bike parking bathrooms. The people we talked to said that they typically wouldn't provide any kind of a fitness room or something like that in affordable housing, but that's always a possibility. So you've got people there that are like doing business, right? And I think that that then also provides a separation to the housing so that they feel more secure on the first floor, to the second floor, to the sixth floor. That would be where the housing units are. So no housing on the ground floor. In terms of cost, I, I don't, I don't know yet. Yeah.
Thank you. And those are my technical questions.
Councilmember Bert.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. On the issue of the cost, on page five of the staff report, table four, it has the cost, construction costs and then the cost per stall. And now that construction cost is based upon the total number of spaces that we built so that under option two, I take it that there's 329 spaces and 243 added from, from what's already there and a net of 191 when you subtract the loss from Lot T. But that cost per stall, is that the cost for all stalls constructed or the net?
I believe, sorry, my name is Gordon Knowles. I'm an architect with Watch You Design. I believe the cost per stall there is for all the stalls rather than the net gain stalls.
Well, that was, that's really interesting. And I'm glad we got this full range of options. Because it goes back to, I was looking for really a statement of the goals and the closest thing I saw to it was on the executive summer, it said, summary, it said, design options to balance parking capacity, housing integration and overall project feasibility. Would, is it correct that it is to either maximize or optimize parking capacity to make up for parking lost from the affordable housing projects that we would plan to do on other lots? Integrate housing to the extent possible. And then overall project feasibility, that's really cost effectiveness and ability to fund. Is that, is, are those the goals that staff is operating under?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then I'll leave to comments later, but I, I just say it's getting that full range of options has caused me to really look and relook at how to balance those issues. And on option, I think it was option two, Ken, that you were talking about, the shallow retail or service space. I interjected shallow. I, is it correct that that would be perhaps shallow spaces to minimize parking stall loss or is there any concept on how the size or depth of that?
Yeah, I, I think Gordon, in this, in this option, the, the driveway goes down here?
No.
Okay. So yeah, I would say that we could probably get 25 to 30 feet.
Okay.
Depth.
And then we, we've had staff explain to us previously, but it really wasn't highlighted in this report, which is that we have an accumulated parking in lieu fund. And we are obligated to utilize that for constructing parking, essentially under a use it or lose it concept. And so approximately, how many dollars do we have set aside in that in lieu fund at this time?
I believe earlier this year it was about 15 million.
Okay. And then what's the anticipation of how we would fund the balance of these options that range from 20 to 24 million?
So that is to be determined pending finance committee budget discussions and other.
All right. Well, then.
Meetings forthcoming.
Given that circumstance, I pose it as not only a question of how, but whether, which goes to a last question. I didn't see an option that was essentially a designed a budget or something closer to designed a budget. We have X dollars. What can we do with that? Or where, what might we build between 15 million and 24 million? And to me, I'm interested in, and maybe Ken can be noodling on this, but is it a linear cost reduction as we, say we reduced one floor? Would that be, it's, it's six levels of parking on two? And so would it be one six or is it a little, does it lose something on, from lack of scaling?
There's a little more complexity. The, the cost really worked on efficiency, stalls per square feet. Depending on how high the store, if you were building efficiently. Depending on how high the store, if you were building efficient floors, then what you're describing is relatively a straightforward calculation. You could come down. However, depending on the number of floors, there are certain code requirements on emergency power. There's also structural issues with the sheer wall proportions and the structural development. So relatively, yes, but it's a little bit more complicated.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Brad.
If I could interject a comment, Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. I just wanted to make sure it's clear to the council that those construction cost figures in the report are early rough order of magnitude for the direct construction cost only. So I wouldn't want the council looking at those thinking these are the potential costs for any of these garages. Those numbers are likely to change. And there's a lot of construction related costs that are not in them. And really they were provided just for the comparative purposes between the options.
Councilmember with God hands.
Thank you. Just to follow Councilmember Bert's line of questioning a little bit farther in light of what Director Eggleston just shared. It does, knowing that this is a preliminary set of partial construction costs, appreciate that it was provided for comparative purposes between options one, two, and three. But how are we, to Councilmember Bert's implication that maybe this isn't a question of which one, but whether? How are, i- is anyone prepared tonight to give us a sense of the estimated full scope of this project cost wise?
No, we haven't calculated the full project cost.
We're not prepared tonight, but I will say that with the previous iteration of this garage, which had an underground level, so that introduces other costs. I'm recalling that at the time the project was paused five years ago, we were looking at a total project cost that was on the order of thirty-one to thirty-two million.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yeah, following up on the finance question. So it would be possible to finance the difference between what we have in the in lieu fund and the cost?
Yes, it would be. Again, this would be conceivably a part of your infrastructure planning. Using available capital funds. And again, a question of priority and how this project would be prioritized against other needs throughout the city.
Okay. And then if some of this parking was used for affordable housing, would we have to sell COPs for that or?
Not for the affordable housing. Well.
Do I consider private activity?
Well, no, it would be separate from the garage itself. Any, any funding needed for affordable housing would be separate from the, from the funds needed for the garage. Again, there are a variety of fun financing mechanisms for a public structure. And, and Councilmember, to your point, I think we would need to look at what would make more sense, whether it's public issuing tax-free debt versus assumption of any private activity associated with the garage. Now, when it comes to the affordable housing, I think the same issues apply in terms of what would the funding source be? And then what method of financing might be needed? Not unlike the conversation currently underway related to lot T.
Okay. So if we build a parking structure now where some of those are designated for future affordable housing, we'd be able to finance that either way, whether that was a hundred percent parking or whether some of those spots were for affordable housing?
Well, there, there's some complexity to your question. In terms of our ability to finance it, I, again, subject to council's decisions on priority, I, I'm confident that we would be able to finance the parking structure. Again, it's a, it's a question of whether the council believes that that's a, a good investment of public funds. That's one. As it relates to allocation or assignment of any of the new parking spaces to a specific development, I do think that's a little more complicated question. And, and quite frankly, I'm not prepared to give you an opinion on that at this moment. But I think that's something you'd want to have staff look at.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just had one question on the, the timing of housing versus the parking lots. Is that relatively arbitrary other than getting in the way of each other on construction? So we could be sourcing a developer for that at the same time that we're developing the garage?
Well, I think the assumption from staff, or at least the, the expectation would be that we would be ready to go with the garage pretty quickly. Understanding the nature of affordable housing development and the complex financing structures, both in terms of selecting a partner as well as their need to develop a, a, a good financing plan. Expect, would assume that that would take longer than the garage would.
Good answer. So it might just work out on its own. Where the garage would go first and the housing would go second if that's what we choose.
I think that's the most likely scenario, it'd be someone we know to.
Okay. I see no other comments from the, no other questions. So let's move to public comment in this issue.
Our first speaker is Mark M.
Hi there. My name is Mark Malino. I'm a former resident in Palo Alto before I was priced out. Hearing this discussion of this parking garage and also other discussions, it just brings to mind some, some unstated assumptions that are being brought forward here in some, what I believe is a flawed framework. We're talking about the net number of parking spaces added as a good thing. This is in fact a bad thing. It is not good to add more parking spaces to a city. This contributes to congestion. We have the unstated assumption that it is proper for new housing to provide its own parking. This is also incorrect. It is better for new housing to be underparked, ideally have zero spaces. There is the statement made earlier that we need to balance the need for housing with the need for parking. This is flawed. We have a need for housing. We have no need for parking. In fact, we have the need for less parking. This talk about how to manage congestion was dealt with in the early year, early decades of the twentieth century. And this idea of adding more garages at a, as an anti-congestion measure has been tried. It was considered the panacea. If you look at early nineteen, nineteen twenties Los Angeles. It was a failure at the time. It's an archaic way of thinking. It has never worked. And it only makes the problem congestion worse. We see internationally actual courage and clear thinking. In Paris, we see Anne Hidalgo putting forward a reduction of aggregate parking spaces in a metropolitan area. That is the goal we should be looking for instead of looking to add more parking. This may seem too broad. This seemed like perhaps this particular project has already gone too far. I would say, one, it is, it's never too late to avoid a mistake. But this also points to better frameworks we can look at and better policy we could be crafting to not go for this car-centric, archaic way of reducing congestion. Instead, we should look at things such as goals of reducing aggregate number of parking spaces in a city. This is common sense and other places are doing it. Implementing maximum parking lot, parking spaces for new developments. We should look at the overall removal of street parking. We're talking about the in-lu fees and how this is a use it or lose it scenario. In fact, here, this is, I mean, one, that's a flawed framework from the first place that we have this in-lu fee structured this way. But if you were to lose it, to set this money on fire, that would be preferable to, to building this parking garage. In fact, the best uses of the in-lu fees would be to be put forward to the demolition of existing parking garages. So thank you for your time and I look forward to more on this subject.
Our next speaker is Aram J.
Okay, so I'm for the affordable housing component. And with a particular request for you to consider. I've been talking, I hang out between where I live and where my son lives. I pass the seven eleven and I visit him just about every day, do some walking with him and stuff. But at the seven eleven where I hang out, I meet a lot of the police officers in the city of Palo Alto. And I was distressed to find out that the Daily Post reported that our chief lives in Morgan City, Morgan Hill, about an hour away. Despite the fact that he seems to be a proponent of community policing. I would like to see you all move forward affordable housing that police, because these two officers that I talked to, the, the last two officers I spoke to, young, both officers of color, they seem to know my name. I don't know how that happens, but they were very friendly. I like to talk with them about tasers, like canines and a variety of issues. And they're quite open. And one of the officers, like you said, Aram, I know you're skeptical about police and you should be. So, you know, really, really cool individuals. But they said they would love to live in Palo Alto. And I know we're put developing and soon to open affordable housing for school teachers. That's fantastic. But we, if we're going to really have community policing, we've got to have our officers live in Palo Alto, live in Palo Alto. And they want to do that. So what can we do to forget about the parking aspect of this project and make it all affordable housing with a top priority for the police officers in the city of Palo Alto? So they're just not driving through in their cars and we don't get to know who they are. They're walking in the, in the town. We get to really model the possibility of absolutely having community policing. I believe that the statistics will point out, then you, when you have police living in the community, police brutality goes down, racial profiling goes down, all of the stuff that we talk about. And I don't know who in the world didn't disclose to the people hiring our police chief that he lived an hour away. That distresses me. How could he possibly be a first responder, twenty-four seven, doing that? Why doesn't he apply to be the police chief in Morgan Hill? And let's get a police chief that lives in Palo Alto, like the city manager. Let's require that the police chief lives in Palo Alto. And I think it's there, at least is important to have our police chief live in Palo Alto, if not way more than our city manager and provide the funds for that to happen. But also let's push for income housing, low income housing that officers can afford and promote community policing. Thank you.
All right, we'll come back to the dais now and welcome Councilmember comment on the proposed staff motion or other suggestions to describe other alternatives. Councilmember Rectal?
Yeah, my, my first inclination would be to support one of the water, waverly projects and kind of get the best of both worlds. But when you look at the financing, you know, whenever you have stairs and ramps in a parking structure, that's just overhead that's lost. And it ends up being that those waverly options are much more expensive per spot than the parking only. And what's happening is that overhead is the same on both projects, but you're spreading it out over more parking spots. And so from a financial standpoint, I think it makes a lot more sense just to build on economies of scale, maximize them parking spots that we have in this. And that will allow us our next housing opportunity to maximize the scale of housing. And now having a maximized scale of, of parking and a maximized scale of housing together will be cheaper than trying to do a mishmash of both. So I support the, because for financial reasons, I support the only parking option.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take a different approach. I strongly prefer option one A. I support staff recommendation. For me, this option is all about balance. I think it appropriately balances the need for more parking to be able to offset parking that is being lost by additional affordable housing development on other city parking lots. Creates parking to meet future demand with the, with the addition of the hundred eleven parking units that is accounted for after the lost spaces of lot T. And while still being able to meet the parking demands for future residents of the affordability, of the affordable housing on this lot. It's also providing space for fifteen new, a four, a hundred percent affordable housing units and a distinct development that's going to be able to separate the housing from the parking structure. And I think, I think it's really important that we're not just creating affordable housing. We need to create housing that is dignified and would be comfortable for anyone regardless of income to be able to live in. And I think this option essentially provides that. It, it provides the opportunity for landscaped public space to be able to beautify it for everyone. It's in a, it's in an ideal location in downtown near additional services, public transportation, restaurants and other, other amenities. I think the fact that Alta prefers that, that is a really strong, it's a really strong endorsement for me. So I just think option one A is providing that balanced approach that we really need when we're looking at future needs of affordable housing and parking demand in the downtown area.
Councilmember Bert?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, we have a, an informative staff report, but in many ways it buries the lead. And the lead is that what this, this particular project is about is it's part of a package of projects over several years in the downtown. And with the objective to be able to optimize and maximize the amount of affordable housing that we can provide on surface parking lots throughout the downtown. This, this lot is not to provide parking for those affordable housing projects per se. It's to offset the parking loss at different other locations. And we'll balance out the parking through these projects so that we don't have a net loss as a result of the several affordable projects that we're working on. So if we look at it as, as a package rather than an isolation, I'm, I'm really facing the question of how do we get the most for our dollars and the, the space that we have? What's the most cost-effective way to get the most affordable housing at, with the least amount of additional subsidy? Given that we are entering a period that appears to be tighter fiscally than we've had for the last couple of years. And so those are the reasons that I'm now, having seen the options, I think option two is the best way to maximize that. We're not talking about necessarily, how do we maximize and optimize the affordable housing on this lot? We're looking at how do we maximize it in the aggregate on these different projects that we're doing. So that's, that's my reason for favoring option two.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Thank you. You know, reading through this and looking at the, the drawings and considering the different aspects of the projects. I was struck when I read the, the paragraph about what Alta Housing said when you spoke with them. Because it pretty much tracked word for word where I came out on things. And I think it's not just, I mean, cost has to be, you know, a priority for us. But I also think that the quality of the housing should be high. And so when they say they highlighted the natural light, more prominent entrance, overall improved livability, that matters to me. They noted that a shared elevator in option one B would pose security concerns. I, I am completely disinterested in all of the B options that have that shared elevator. I think that's just not appropriate, whether it's one B or three B. They do note the financing challenges for one A. And then also obviously with the podium options. And I, I am not in favor of the podium options for many of the reasons that Mr. Hayes identified. And then it says additionally, the dogleg residential options were not favored due to issues with property management oversight and the suboptimal location of residential units along the alleyway. And I, I completely agree with that. I think being tucked in next to the sixty-foot AT&T building back in there is just not a place that's really a friendly environment. And so when I look at for, since this is primarily And so when I look at, since this is primarily a parking project and option one has, depending on how you calculate it, three to six times as many net new parking stalls as option three. And the costs are greater than option two, but they're not that much greater that I personally would forego the savings of option two in favor of getting some additional affordable housing downtown. And so given all that, my preferred option is 1A. But that said, I do greatly prefer option two to option three.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to piggyback here on what my colleagues have said. Sorry. I agree with Councilmember Stone and the staff that 1A is the preferred option. I agree with Councilmember Burt that this location is part of a whole package of projects in the downtown. And this location becomes the offset for the parking we will take away as we build more affordable housing on more and more city-owned surface parking lots. I love the intentionality that we will go well beyond Lot T to additional lots for affordable housing on city-owned surface parking lots. This feels to me to be a decision in furtherance of that expectation. And like Councilmember Vice Mayor Vinker, I can stop expending a little more to tuck some affordable housing in because I think it is great to do infill affordable housing wherever we can. And this feels like a great downtown location for it.
Councilmember Lou?
I would echo the comments of Councilmember Stone, Lithgow Hames and Vice Mayor Vinker. I'd also just chime in that I think the urban design and block by block variability of having chunked out space that is initially green space and in the future housing, I think has intangible value that is valuable to me. I think I am more open to option 1B than other folks here. I think there are problems to resolve with that, to understand whether square footage could be maximized. But I think it's not a super clear premise to me that would be inherently less safe. And I think there could be value of just having also eyes on the parking garage, so to say, in addition to having eyes on the street, on top of not needing the kind of silly second staircase. But I know that's a California thing we can't change. So I would be happy to advance 1A. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few follow-on comments to what the colleagues have said. When we were way back in the Housing Element Working Group, we started talking about that as 100% housing site, Lot D, and thinking we could get in there, 150. And I know it was illusions of grandeur. I know it wasn't, but it was excitement around what we could do there. So honestly, to me, it's a little frustrating that we're talking about only 15 as opposed to trying to put some more in there. And as others, you know, Alta Housing carries a lot of weight with me in terms of their expertise. But they even turned down the 25 units versus 15. I guess because of where the architect and all of you decided that it would be best to fit. So that's all of the options, three with the dogleg. So to go to zero, I don't think fits with our vision. And I think what Councilmember Stone said about, you know, a balance of what we're trying to do there is appropriate. I do think that what Councilmember Burt said about a package of projects is really important for all of us to keep in mind and all the public to keep in mind. This is not just a one-off. This is a whole downtown area that we're trying to planning and serve, to plan and serve. And we're doing all kinds of things, including trying to backstop state law 2097, who says that nobody has to give any parking for people that are close to the train. So there are a lot of things that we're trying to backstop with parking. But to go with zero housing at all, and particularly affordable, I think is sort of, it's just, it's a waste of some of the most perfect places in town for us to have housing units. So all I could say about that further at this point is that if there's any way to work in more and not have outrageous costs, I think we should still be looking at that. I think the issue of financing this, of course, is important. But we have to take a long-term strategic approach to this. And if this is something that we need and we have to finance the difference, we have superior borrowing capacity and a number like 10 million in terms of borrowing and debt service is not an insurmountable number to achieve a strategic objective as this is for all the many uses that we're trying to use this building for. So I think I come out a little bit reluctantly on 1A because we get some affordable housing. Other comments? Good.
Well, I will move the staff recommendation that we support option 1A.
No second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. No, I'll stand on my prior comments.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not going to support option 1A for really the reasons that I stated before. I think we're all in support of this master plan for affordable housing downtown and to be able to replace the parking loss, not to have a net increase in parking. But I think it's misguided when colleagues think about, when Alta Housing wasn't asked, to my understanding, what would be the best approach for maximizing affordable housing downtown? They're asked what would be best for this lot in isolation? And that's a different question. And I don't think it's one question, but I think the broader question is the more important one we should be asking ourselves. And those who are supporting this recommendation because it has more affordable housing on this site, I would argue that's working against the economics of more affordable housing downtown, not in favor of it. So looking at this in isolation and making that decision in isolation of this lot is not necessarily optimizing our package of projects. It's, you know, we'll yet see what we have on our ability to fund and afford these things going forward. It's not a bad option. I just don't think it's the best option.
Seeing no other comments? Yep, sorry. Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, I agree. This is not a bad option. I just don't think it's the best option. We all want to build as much affordable housing we can. And the reason we're not, our biggest limitation is money. So money matters. And this is not the most efficient way of building parking spots. And as a result, future affordable housing will not be as optimal. By building parking with reckless abandon here, we can build housing with reckless abandon in the future. And so money matters. And this is not the most cost effective way of providing both housing and parking.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll go to a vote.
Mayor Lalling?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
No.
Councilmember Rektal?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay, thank you. Now we can take our 15-minute break before we come back for the next item.
We are back from a short break and we are resuming and we are covering item 12 in our public hearing, which is a quasi judicial item on 70 and Sina Avenue. So we'll have a staff report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Jonathan Late, Director for Planning and Development Services. I'm going to introduce Emily Callis, our senior planner, who's running point on this project. Ms. Callis?
Hi. Good evening, Council. This is the Planned Home Zoning public hearing for 70 and Sina. Can you please go to the next slide? The address comprises of the parcel assigned, the address of 70 and Sina, as well as the parcel directly next to it, as shown on the map here. The site is adjacent to and surrounded by the Town and Country Shopping Center. It's also in the same general neighborhood as the Palo Alto Medical Foundation office and other offices. It is down and Sina from the Opportunity Center, and it is also a short distance away from the Palo Alto Caltrain Station. Next slide. The proposed project includes 10 condominium townhome style units organized around the central driveway. Two of these units would be affordable, restricted to below market rates at 80% of area median income or AMI. The requested zoning exceptions, because this is a PHZ project and therefore proposes to deviate from the typically required zoning requirements, includes a 1.57 FAR for area ratio where 1.25 is allowed, a 58% lot coverage where 50% is allowed, a zero foot, it's seven inches rear setback where 10 feet would typically be required. The usable open space per unit varies from 79 to 155 square feet, where 150 square feet is required. And this project does not have ground level landscaping where 30% is typically required. Next slide. This project has gone through a long process, beginning with a council pre-screening in September of 2022. It then made changes to the design and elected to have a preliminary architectural review board application. The hearing for that was in December of 2023. The applicant submitted their formal application in March of 2024, had an initial PTC hearing in September, followed by two ARB hearings, the first in November 2024, and the recommendation for approval in February 2025. The PTC also moved the project forward to council in February, and now council will be making the final decision. Next slide. At the original council pre-screening, the proposed project was a five-story building. And the feedback at the time was that further consideration was needed, as well as coordination with Town and Country. The outcome of that was a reduction in size from the five-story more apartment-style building to the 10 townhouse condominium-style building. Next slide. In terms of the feedback received by the ARB and the PTC, most were supportive of the scale of the proposed project, although some were also supportive of the original scale of the pre-screening proposal, the larger project. Most were supportive of potential for Town and Country to add housing in the future, so future potential development at the adjacent properties. The ARB also included in their motion a recommendation to consider rezoning the entire north parking lot area of Town and Country for residential use. The planning commission split their vote. Three voted in support of a recommendation of approval, and three were against, and so it came forward to council, as described in the report, as a split motion. The PTC also recommended considering ways to improve pedestrian safety at the end of Encina, and to consider a different affordability mix, which I discuss later in this presentation. Additionally, we have representatives from the PTC and ARB on Zoom if you have any questions later. Next slide. Key considerations for council to consider in their decision this evening includes consistency with the findings, comprehensive plan and zoning code, which are described in the attachments to the staff report, the site development regulations, the public benefit and affordable units as a public benefit is a requirement of a planned home zoning project, and then the relationship between the proposed project and Town and Country Shopping Center as it relates to the compatibility of land uses and the ongoing operations of the shopping center. Next slide. The proposed project includes the following public benefits as required for a planned home zoning. The proposed units are family-sized condominium units, which offer an ownership opportunity. Additionally, two of these units would be affordable below market rates to 80% AMI. This is consistent with the guidance council provided in 2020 for PHZ product projects, specifically option two, which gives a weighted value to the affordability level of the proposed units compared to what is being provided as a part of the project. So 20%, two out of 10 units are deed restricted below market rate, but this gives a weighted value of 24%. So that exceeds the minimum requirement of 20%. Next slide, please. Thanks. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, a streamlined review has been prepared under CEQA guideline 15183, which is projects consistent with the comprehensive plan and comprehensive plan EIR. This was prepared by Rincon consultants, and they are also available on Zoom if there are any questions. But essentially, the mitigation measures from the comprehensive plan EIR will be applied as applicable, because this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the development potential of the comprehensive plan EIR. Next slide. We received many public comments throughout the process of this project. Notably, Ellis Partners, who is the operator of the Town and Country Shopping Center, provided numerous comments throughout the process, including concerns regarding the scale setback and the ongoing operations of the shopping center, as this project abuts to one of the kind of service alley areas for the shopping center. They also requested for a collaborative approach to housing in this area. We also received other letters that have been included in the staff report and included in your packages, primarily in support, but also expressing a variety of views. Next slide. Our recommendation this evening is for council to consider the CEQA documents checklist analyzing the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan EIR, approve the ordinance rezoning the subject site from community commercial to planned home zoning, and approve the record of land use action for the proposed project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. The project applicant is also prepared to give their presentation. Thank you. the relationship between the proposed project and Town and Country Shopping Center as it relates to the compatibility of land uses and the ongoing operations of the shopping center. Next slide. The proposed project includes the following public benefits as required for a planned home zoning. The proposed units are family-sized condominium units, which offer an ownership opportunity. Additionally, two of these units would be affordable below-market rates to eighty percent AMI. This is consistent with the guidance council provided in 2020 for PHZ products, projects, specifically option two, which gives a weighted value to the affordability level of the proposed units compared to what is being provided as a part of the project. So twenty percent, two out of ten units, are deed-restricted below-market rate, but this gives a weighted value of twenty-four percent. So that exceeds the minimum requirement of twenty percent. Next slide, please. Thanks. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, a streamlined review has been prepared under CEQA Guideline 15183, which is projects consistent with the comprehensive plan and comprehensive plan EIR. This was prepared by Rincon Consultants, and they are also available on Zoom if there are any questions. But essentially, the mitigation measures from the comprehensive plan EIR will be applied as applicable, because this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the development potential of the comprehensive plan EIR. Next slide. We received many public comments throughout the process of this project, notably Ellis Partners, who is the operator of the Town and Country Shopping Center, provided numerous comments throughout the process, including concerns regarding the scale setback and the ongoing operations of the shopping center, as this project abuts to one of the kind of service alley areas for the shopping center. They also requested for a collaborative approach to housing in this area. We also received other letters that have been included in the staff report and included in your packages, primarily in support, but also expressing a variety of views. Next slide. Our recommendation this evening is for council to consider the CEQA documents checklist analyzing the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan EIR, approve the ordinance rezoning the subject site from a community commercial to planned home zoning, and approve the record of land use action for the proposed project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. The project applicant is also prepared to give their presentation. Thank you.
Mayor Lowing, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Jeff Calbraith, and I'm a principal at Hayes Group Architects. So excited to be here to talk about Seventy and Sina again. Next slide, the project we've been in the process for for the last three years, as Emily noted. Next slide, please. The project, as we as we know, is surrounded by or sort of in the midst of the rear parking lot at Town and Country Shopping Center, along the south edge of Encina Avenue. Next slide. The original project, as Emily mentioned, was five stories tall and consisted of twenty condo units, four of which were affordable units. Next slide. That was presented in September of 2022, and we came away from that pre-screening hearing with two major takeaways. The first was that there was unanimous agreement that this was a great place for housing. Proximity to so many services make it so. The second thing we came away with was the mandate to work with Ellis Partners to make sure that their concerns about Town and Country were addressed. Next slide, please. Those concerns primarily were around two things. One was the feeling that a five-story project was out of context with Town and Country, both in terms of height and density, which is predominantly a one- and two-story development. And secondly, there were concerns about the potential impacts of having housing adjacent to Town and Country, suggesting it might hurt the vitality of the shopping center and take away from the existing character. Next slide, please. So again, the original project was five stories, four stories of units over a ground-floor podium, as it's called, where the parking and services were located. Next slide. Coming out of the meeting, then, we, well, and this is a view at the project would have been seen from the back entry into Town and Country. You're looking back towards Encina Avenue, Pamp in the distance. So next slide, and then jump ahead to the next one. Actually, stay here for a second, sorry. So diagrammatically, moving quick. So we went back and looked at, okay, how can we do this? How can we bring down the scale of this project? We found that with this model, we could pare back a couple of units from the fifth floor and get the rear facade down to four stories, reducing its mass and helping it relate better to Town and Country. Next slide. We took plans and updated renderings, and we met with Ellis Partners and discussed the proposals, and they felt that it was insufficient to address their concerns. So we went back to the drawing board, and we came up with a few other concepts to pare down a couple floors off of the project, worked with contractors. Next slide, and found that unfortunately, with this approach, a very common sort of podium-style approach, we couldn't get the project to work financially. Next slide. So we went all the way back to the drawing board and scratched our heads and thought, okay, is there anything we can do to get the three-story project that Town and Country has asked for? And what we found is that townhouses provided the solution for that. Building in townhouses and all wood construction eliminates a lot of the costs associated with the prior approach to development. Next slide, please. And so you can see here just a simple depiction of how those units lay out on the site. We have a thirty-foot-wide courtyard in the middle, where pedestrian access and vehicular access happen, and the two sides of the property are pulled in at five feet minimum for almost the entire length of the lot, with the exception of a few protrusions in the back. Next slide. So there's many, many projects that have been built this way. There's one in particular in San Francisco that we really liked and used as a model. This is Fulton Place. Next slide, please. What we love about this project is how they elevate that central courtyard to not be just a driveway, but it's a place that really adds to the character and is a pleasant place to be. Next slide. It's also a place that can be utilized on occasion by occupants for other things, such as a block party, as you see here. Next slide, please. So again, we, what we end up with in this approach is ten units organized around a central courtyard. The ground floor, each unit has a private garage and a stair that leads up to, next slide, the living spaces, the kitchen, living room, and one bedroom for most units on the second floor, and two more bedrooms for each unit on the third floor. That gives us the front eight units, which are three-bedroom, and the rear two units, which are two-bedroom. Next slide, please. So this now is the view of the current proposed design. You'll notice it's considerably different than the original, both in its mass, its materiality, and its scale. You'll see also a lot of cues taken from Town and Country. It is not simple mockery, not mockery, but not mimicry, rather, of Town and Country, but there's a lot of elements that are similar. You notice there's a very strong, single-story base expressed of masonry, which is similar material used to the backside of Town and Country. You'll also notice the board and battens with dark gray siding on the left of Town and Country, which is utilized typically throughout DNC at two-story elements, some one-story, and on the Trader Joe's building, for example, in our project. Now, you can see that same material deployed on the upper, second, and third floors. You also noticed low-slope pitch roofs for each of those units, as well as an arcade of columned beams expressed along the sides. Next slide, please. So after a few rounds back and forth with the ARB and a lot of adjustments to the design, we landed here at our finally ARB approval. This image shows a view as our project would be seen from within Town and Country. So the top image is as it stands now. Without the project, then the image on the bottom is with our project in place. All agreed that we've gotten to a point where the project feels very much at home. Next slide, please. Of course, Town and Country is not the only neighbor. There are several other buildings across the street that we also are part of our context, and they're part of the equation as well. Next slide, please. We'll jump quickly through the next few slides, if you don't mind. I think these are the same that are in the packet, so we'll move quickly through those. Next slide. This is the north corner. Next slide, zooming in on one of the sideyards that step back and have recesses for vertical planting. Next slide. This is one of the long elevations. This one is the one that guides you from Encina on the left into Town and Country on the right. Next slide. A few images of the central courtyard. Next, please. Next, again. And one more. So just to sum up my comments, there's been some recent changes in Ellis Partners' concerns. At the February 26th ARB hearing, they expressed now an interest in developing a larger, taller residential project in other parts of the rear parking lot. This indicates to us that they're no longer concerned about five stories being out of context, or about the negative impacts of housing. We're thrilled, frankly, to hear that, and thrilled that there'll be more housing on Encina sooner than later. I'm going to save the last two and a half minutes for Ed Storm from Stormland.
Thanks, Jeff. Members of council, my name is Ed Storm. I'm better? Okay. I'm Ed Storm, still Ed Storm. I'm here as an applicant for the project in front of you this evening. As Jeff mentioned, this started about three years ago. This property came on the market. I was contacted by the family that owns it, who I know, they asked me what I thought it should be, and I said, well, the location is an ideal residential location. I don't know what the constraints are, but that's what it should be. And based on that conversation, I did meet with Town and Country initially. They had other beliefs and did not think it was possible, I think, at the time, so that came to naught at that time. So at that point, we went about doing what we thought we needed to do to get this approved. And two and a half years later, three-quarters of a million dollars, and a number of different meetings, we think we've done everything asked of us. We've compromised at every turn. We've played by all the rules. We assume there's no charade in front of us, except at the last minute now, I find out that there's another thought, that there's another bigger project that may come forward, and we're supposed to somehow know how to respond to that. Well, it's not really important, because approval for our project does not in any way preclude the possibility of a much larger project. In fact, I would tell you that the vote tonight, a positive vote, will tell people that this is a place where residential can be built, and they ought to pursue it. There is more than one other property owner on Encina that's in the audience now, and I'm sure he's very interested in what happens tonight. So I hope you take an opportunity to build some kind of a spark or light a spark that will make this whole area become a great place for people to live. We know it's a great location. Every amenity possible is here. It's what we want to do. And again, we don't preclude, and we will continue to work with any of our neighbors who think we can make a better project out of this. So unless you have any questions, that's my old man's spiel for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Are there pressing questions that you would like to ask of staff? Yeah, we'll do disclosure as well, but I just want to know procedurally, questions and then comments, or?
Procedurally, I think we need to do disclosures first.
Okay, start. Thank you.
Okay. I met with both the applicant and the Town and Country Ellis Properties and did not receive information that has not been disclosed in their comments written in oral.
Go ahead, just down the row here. Thanks.
I have also met with both the applicant and Ellis Properties or Ellis Partners. Ellis Partners did show a very blocky rendering of what a five-story or so development could look like across the entire parking lot area, but that was the only notable thing that I've seen that was not on the public record.
Yeah, and I met by Zoom with both the applicant and his architect, and with Ellis Partners and associate. Both were Zoom meetings. Did not receive any additional information, except I think I may have seen that blocky drawing.
Similarly, I met with both the developer and Ellis Partners, got up to date. The goal was just to spend a little more time looking at the drawings and understanding the concepts, but no additional information that was not disclosed to the public.
Yeah, and I too both met with Ellis Partners and also the applicant. Nothing to report.
I met by Zoom with Ellis Partners, as well as with the applicant, Stormland and the Hayes Group, and didn't see anything that hasn't been presented in the documents in front of us tonight.
I met with the applicant and Ellis Partners. To the best of my knowledge, I did not receive anything outside of the public record.
Okay, thank you. Are there any pressing questions for staff at this point? Or should we hear public comment? Oh, I have a couple lights. Cosmo, let's go, Hames?
That was actually for disclosures, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, I don't see any questions at this point, so let's go to public comment. And how many speakers do we have?
We have eight requests to speak.
Okay, and no groups, right?
Correct, no groups.
Okay. Let's go with the normal three minutes.
Our first speaker is David H.
Hi, Mayor Lowing and Vice Mayor Baker. David Hirsch from the ARB, but I am not, I am speaking individually and not as an ARB member. I'm opposed to moving ahead with the Seventy and Sina part of the project, but I'm really delighted to hear that the whole site has been redesigned PHZ and that it can be a housing project site. I'm also not opposed to the design of the project that's been presented by Hayes Group. It's, it has had quite successful urban environment, but it will interfere with the possibility of this being a really significant, more than one-acre site here. I want to point out that in our, the ARB coordinate, we had a coordinated area plan, and the reason for that is exactly this kind of a site. The work plan would, if it were developed as a single unit for the entire site, it will be a much more effective project. So that's why I'm suggesting that the, this particular project be deferred until a later date, until the entire site can be analyzed and presented to the board. Here are three compelling reasons for this deferral. The entire site could provide an exceptional, unique neighborhood of probably a hundred or a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty units, significantly more than this ten-unit portion. If the site is not developed as one unit, and its surrounding property were to remain a parking lot, as an entry to Town and Country, it will forever be an inappropriate neighborhood environment for this isolated project. It will be surrounded by cars in the parking lot, and the center of it, as described, is just an access for sixteen cars to park within these townhomes, backing up, moving in, creating an obstruction, perhaps objects left out in the street from the garages that open up onto the side, onto the center's area. It's not an attractive area for a possibility of as a public space. So this is one reason why I'm suggesting it really should be part of the overall design of the site.
Your time is up.
Just one more point. The developer of the ten-unit project has been approached by Ellis Partners, owner of Town and Country, who are working on a plan for the entire site. I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justine B.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing and City Council members. My name is Justine Burt, and my comments tonight are as a resident in downtown. And by the way, I e-bike over to Trader Joe's to do grocery shopping and put four bags of groceries in my panniers, because it's faster to bike over there than to drive. I am here in support of rezoning of Encina Avenue. It's a very transit-rich area. As I'm sure you know, the VTA Rapid 522 screams right by there, down El Comandante Real, as does the VTA 22. Only half a mile away is the Caltrain Station, where you can also catch the Samtrans bus or the Dumbarton Express Bus to get to the East Bay. So if there are concerns about the site losing surface parking, that some of the employees at Town and Country might use, I refer you to the 2016 Transportation Demand Management Plan that Town and Country did. In that plan, it says there are eight hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. They surveyed four hundred and sixty-two full and part-time employees, asked them what city they live in, and fifty-four percent live in a city served by Caltrain. And as you all know, in September, Caltrain upgraded to this brand-new, world-class, all-electric. People love taking it. Service. Of those four hundred and sixty-two full and part-time employees, thirty percent live in Palo Alto or the next town, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, or Mountain View, and many of them could bike. And then thirty-eight percent could take a bus home to Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Menlo Park, Fremont, Newark, Union City. So as you can see, this is a transit-rich area, only half a mile from the transit center. And for those who need first-last-mile solutions to get to the train or bus, there's bike, e-bike, e-scooter, or walking. So I support this project, rezoning it, and that'll take us one step closer to Palo Alto's plan to support building of six thousand new housing units by 2031. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean R., followed by B. Taylor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dean Rubinson, and I've been the Director of Development for Ellis Partners for the last twenty years. Over this period, our team has been the proud stewards of Town and Country, a treasure destination through global financial crises and pandemics. As you are aware, since city staff indicated to us only five months ago that our parking lots can also be converted to housing, we've commenced with a detailed analysis with architects and our consultants. As we look ahead, we see the opportunity to reimagine Town and Country as a well-planned mixed-use retail, office, and housing project for the city. As you well know, we have been opposed to the scale and design of the isolated Stormland project since the beginning. As you well know, we have been opposed to the scale and design of the isolated Stormland project since the beginning. This opposition has recently grown to include a member of the ARB and nearly half of the PTC. Despite clear feedback, the applicant continues to push forward with their current design. Their proposal is the equivalent of 37 units per acre on a quarter-acre lot, which is twice the norm for house, for townhomes in the area. A typical density would equate to only five townhomes on a site this size. Stormland's unwillingness to reduce the unit count to what might be more typical leaves no room for compliance with the comp plan, no room for urban greening that the comp plan mandates, no room for real open space other than a driveway, no room for the 21 trees that they have to plant off-site despite removing eight thriving trees, and no room for adequate parking with only 16 spots for their 26 bedrooms. We recognize that the city is under pressure to create new housing, and we are fully supportive of this mandate. We have been designing and entitling residential projects for over a decade throughout the Bay Area, and we're excited now to bring our residential expertise to Town and Country to create a comprehensively planned project of over 100 units at a range of affordability levels. You've established the PHC ordinance for projects like the one we're envisioning that will have meaningful impact on the housing shortage and provide substantial public benefit. But it's crystal clear to us that the current 70 and Sina project does not comply with the intent or the letter of the PHC ordinance. We know you're here tonight to make the difficult decision on the 10-unit project in front of you. As you know, neither the ARB or the PTC could find a way to unanimously support this project, and in fact, the PTC could not find it to be compliant with the comp plan. Such compliance is a prerequisite of 70 and Sina's secret approval and a prerequisite of your approval tonight as a PHC. Scale down to a more typical density, the project could comply with the comp plan and would result in a project that we would likely support, and it would still result in a financially successful outcome for the developer. We know there is a lot of pressure on the council to approve housing projects, but for the sake of the delta of four to five luxury condos amongst arena goal of over 6,000 units.
Your time is up.
Let me just finish the sentence. We do not think it is worth the risk to Town and Country Village, and it sets a bad precedent for future residential development. Thank you.
Our next speaker is B. Taylor, followed by Alex A.
Hi, my name is Bob Taylor. I reside at 480 Marlowe Street. I'm here to represent myself and also the family that has owned this land for three generations. They recently, in 2022, decided that they might want to sell the property, listed the property for sale. When that was done, shortly thereafter, Ellis Partners terminated their lease, said they didn't want to lease it anymore and did not want to negotiate an extension. So at that point, about that time, we received several offers for the property, one from a person who wanted to develop it as an office building and the other who was interested here, Mr. Storm, who was interested in developing a residential property. And I'm here to advocate for his solution to this property because the alternative of a boutique, small office building, which requires no permit beyond just applying, doesn't require your direct approval, is the alternative for the site. It's notable, I think, that despite the discussion about Town and Country wanting to build X numbers of units, that the owners of Town and Country are not here to advocate for that. There's no objection from them to our development or the development that's proposed. The site, well, yeah, we'd like it to be bigger. We'd like to have, you know, own the whole property. It's just not, it's not what's before you today. What's before you is what we have. And it, what it is, is an excellent site for housing. It's close to transportation, close to Stanford University, close to Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Its desirability from a real estate standpoint is a 10 out of 10 for this type of townhouse development. I developed a similar townhouse development in Willow Glen with slightly more units, but basically the same design in this sort of courtyard setting. And I can tell you, it has been an incredibly successful development, and people love living there, love the, the community atmosphere and the affordability of the project and the ability to be close to downtown Willow Glen. Well, this has got it even in spades better than that project. So I think it'll be immensely successful. It provides affordable housing. It basically checks all the boxes for what the city is looking for. So I hope that you will see this as a great opportunity for the city to build housing in a place where it's sorely needed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex A., followed by Amy A.
Hi, council members. My name's Alex Antebi, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Williams Charitable Foundation as an officer and board member of the foundation. The Williams Foundation originates from the estate of the original developer of Town and Country Village around 1950. The Williams family were the stewards of this treasured community center from 1950 to 2004. In 2004, the foundation passed that mantle to the Ellis Partners team. Yet we remain the owner of the land, underlying Town and Country, and we are under a long-term ground lease agreement with Ellis. Over the 20 years, Ellis has implemented a major renovation and re-tenanting of the center and has continued to invest in this dynamic community gathering place, even through difficult times like COVID. We, the Williams Charitable Foundation, are supportive of exploring a housing project adjacent to Town and Country. We would like to see a project built with more than 100 units and a parking structure. Such a project would add much-needed rental housing to a central area of Palo Alto, this with the convenience of transportation, shopping, and proximity to Paly, Stamford, and Pampf, as has been mentioned by other speakers. Ideally, we would like this area developed in conjunction with 70 and Sina, especially as the current 70 and Sina project may not naturally fit with a larger vision for housing in this area. Providing additional housing is consistent with the mission statement of our foundation. We are committed to continuing to work with Ellis Partners and the city, and we aim to find a more appropriate project for the city of Palo Alto, one that is more aligned with the goals and requirements of the council as established for PHC projects. Thank you for your consideration. I seed my tongue.
Our next speaker is Amy A., followed by Herb B.
I would just like to second Justine's comments. Biking to Town and Country is the only way to go, as far as I'm concerned. I'm Amy Ashton, Executive Director of Palo Alto Forward. And almost three years ago now, I watched this project come before council. Direction was given to shrink the project, which is exactly what the applicant did. Now, tens of meetings, probably hundreds of revisions later, it's back before you with a staff recommendation to approve. As a city, we owe it to the applicant to keep our word. These are 10 much-needed, family-sized units, which is great and exactly what PTC and you all have said we want more of. I really hear the argument for a larger plan. As an urban planner, it is, that's what you salivate over. It's the most wonderful site. It addresses fair housing goals. The site's near Caltrain, jobs, services, bike infrastructure, schools. And I'll tell you, our membership sent me a lot of emails on this subject exactly. And that doesn't happen very often. So this is a great idea. And approving this project would not stop that planning because I think we all acknowledge that it would be a lift from amending our comp plan, which does not allow housing at Town and Country on the larger site. It's not a housing-aliment site at all. The site planning itself could take years. This is a large, long effort. So I urge you to approve 70 and Sina tonight and provide guidance in support of long-term master planning because it's a great site for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Herb B., followed by Randy P.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, council members. The project before you is a segment of a larger sequel project that involves the replacement of this parking that was ancillary to the retail use. The site is not replacing a primary parking use, but rather a parking use that was part of Town and Country's development. At the, you don't have the minutes of meetings as part of the permanent, of the record before you, and you should continue the meeting until you get those. For example, at the AR, at the planning, I believe it was at the ARB meeting that I, I said that maybe these two groups, Ellis and Hayes, are not really adversaries. They're working together to get a bigger development. Ed Storm on Stormland, for Stormland Company, signs the applications as the landowner, and Hayes signed the applications as the applicant. And for the first time in the staff report, it says they are the applicant on behalf of a prospective purchaser. And tonight, Mr. Storm identified himself not as the property owner, but as the applicant. I think you need a clear statement in public as to who the property owner is, who has the deed to the property, and who is the true applicant that will get the entitlement to develop and also has the right to develop on the property. So you know what we're talking about. In terms of the Planning Commission vote, staff insisted that the Planning Commission send the 3-3 vote to you and didn't suggest that they continue the item, so there'd be seven commissioners participating so you can get a true recommendation from the Planning and Transportation Commission. As far as what's in the zoning code, I recall that Ellis Partners included in the administrative record the section of the zoning code that says that parking, not, not, not the parking itself, but any part of the Town and Country would not be replaced by residential. So that's a clear statement in the zoning code that has never been replaced by anything and has not been replaced by the PHZ zone, which that's never been adopted. The staff, as in the past, has somehow didn't get my letters or know about them because they said they have, besides Ellis and Hayes, they have letters in support and other various letters came in. Oh, nobody sent one opposed. That's consistent behavior on this project.
Our next speaker is Randy P.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Randy Pop, and I'm a resident of Palo Alto, as well as an architect whose practice has been focused here. My professional experience provides context for analyzing this project, and I've approached my review much like I typically did when I was Chair of the ARB. I'm a strong supporter of housing in Palo Alto, and I'm excited about the prospect of increasing the housing stock in this particular area of the city, especially adjacent to Town and Country Village along Encina. I want to see housing built here. At this point, I'm still unable to support this project and agree with the clear feedback from the PTC last month that it remains too dense and cannot satisfy the required findings for compatibility due to inadequate setbacks. Much of what the ARB is tasked with falls into a category of subjective evaluation and requires findings that explain how the facts of the project show consistency with the comp plan policies. The facts of this project's design are incompatible with the comp plan policies related both to urban greening and preservation of scale and architectural compatibility. L14, 413 and L414 encourage urban greening, maintaining existing trees, and planting additional trees. This project removes eight mature trees. It does not maintain existing trees. In exchange, the project proposes seven trees. It does not plant additional trees. In fact, it reduces the overall number. Further, the trees will be planted in locations that likely will eventually be without access to necessary sunlight, which means they may not survive. The result of this would ultimately be a reduction in urban greening. Payment of in-lu fees for 21 trees elsewhere in the city will not make Town and Country a more vibrant green environment, as encouraged by the comp plan. Until the project density is reduced, I can see no successful way for these comp plan policies to be satisfied, and I see no way that this council could find that the project details are consistent with the comp plan. Expanding on this a bit further, time and again, this project is memorized reviewed by both the ARB and PTC with consistent feedback indicating that reducing density would be appropriate, but that change has not occurred. Considering the context of the site and the conditions at the boundaries of this tiny quarter-acre parcel, the project cannot provide comfortable and reasonable residential living opportunities for 10 units. Simply put, the concern I hope you'll all understand is that the project's reliance on the open space of the Town and Country parking lot for access to air and light will be lost when development on adjacent parcels occurs, consistent with this project's precedent for setbacks, almost certainly affecting all 10 units. I believe this site could comfortably include five to six units while complying with the comp plan and accommodating typical residential design expectations. But please remember, the goal of the PHZ is to incentivize broad, comprehensive redevelopment, not to rezone a quarter acre for luxury townhomes. I know this applicant has been in process for some time, but once constructed, the project will exist for decades. Please consider your decision tonight in the context of that timeline and make the best choice for how this will impact all of Palo Alto. There is ample time to get this right.
Your time is up. That concludes public comment on Action Item 12.
Okay. Thank you very much from all of the public commenters here and that came in via email. So we'll bring it back to the dais now for comments from council members.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor. The applicant does have a three-minute rebuttal to public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Ed Storm again, and if I could, let me take the easy part first. Yes, this is not suburban living. This is urban living. I've got El Camino on one side. I've got a train tracks on the other. I've got a shopping center, and I've got a hospital. But we believe that there are people that want to live in this environment. This is an alternative way of living, and a lot of people enjoy it. They like the stimulus, like the craziness of it. They like the energy that's produced by it. So I don't think this is supposed to be a suburban site, and that's not what we ever planned here. And I don't think you do a bigger project later. It's going to be a suburban site. It's going to be an urban site. And with that, there's a lot of good that comes with that. I'm a little shocked that, you know, we wouldn't even be having this conversation if I didn't start with this project about housing. I'm surprised the Ellis's don't compliment me and thank me to open this door up to build residential on their parking lot. It's a great economic opportunity. And then someone came up, one of the commissioners, I believe, about they want to build 200 units. Not a problem. You can do 200 units. It's not saying tonight you can't do a big project on this property. We're 16% of the land they have. It's nothing. We can also create a wedding cake out of this where we have a smaller project in front of a much bigger project. So it's much more pleasing to the eye in a way. There's so many positives here, and that no one wants to talk about the positive. The owner wants to talk about the negatives. And that's a thing that can become a little bit of a disease in the city and why things don't get done. But here you are with a chance to have a housing project. We're ready to build it. We believe in it, and we're going to put our money up to make it happen. So I hope you can see the path forward to approve this project and start residential happening on Encina, and I hope bigger projects do come forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the reminder of that, Director Lake. You guys have anything to add before we press questions to you or, okay? Customer, Recdo?
Both at PTC and also in public comment, people talked about the small setback. Can you talk about how that setback, will it affect what Ellis does with their property? Particularly on the back where you have the seven-inch setback. Is that problematic at all?
The seven-inch setback is not an issue in terms of fire access to the site, which is provided through the courtyard as well as through the five-foot side setbacks. which is provided through the courtyard as well as through the five-foot side setbacks. That's most of the answer.
Yeah. From an engineering standpoint, downtown, we have buildings that are zero setback. So I assume that construction techniques can handle that. And so if this property goes up seven inches from the boundary, I assume that Ellis could use the same type of techniques that you would use downtown to build right up to the property line?
Correct. Things like fire-rated walls and fire sprinklers both contribute to being able to construct a building at the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Burt?
Thank you. You know, I think ideally, we would have had Ellis aware that that the city would be receptive to housing on their parking areas sooner than they have. But this project actually came forward as a five-story project, and in response, Dallas was scaled down to three stories. I'm really, on that high-level issue, I'm having trouble justifying a reversal of that now that we have a bigger project that potentially is on the horizon on the other parking areas of Town and Country or some of the other parking. I do have a couple questions and concerns just on one part of comp plan consistency. When we get a staff report and we say, well, it's consistent with the comp plan in X and Y manners, we traditionally have really asked to make sure that we also add, and here's where it's inconsistent. And I think it's very important that we put that out there. We very often have to weigh different elements of comp plan consistency. It's an imperfect ability to have projects comply with all aspects, but we just want to have all those things on the table. And the area that I think has the greatest concern, which is kind of the elements relating to urban greenery and landscaping, and this is basically has very little of it. We're having off-site trees. I didn't know whether there had been any consideration to rooftop gardens, which we've had on a lot of projects recently, and it allows for greenery and private open space or shared open space. Through the chair, can I ask the applicant a question?
Yes.
Thank you. So the question is, has there been any consideration of utilizing the rooftop space as either a private or a common, common among the tenants, open space with some limited landscaping?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Burt. Roof gardens are fabulous. When you can pull them off, it's always a push and pull. What do you accommodate up there and what are the costs and impacts? Getting, having a rooftop garden requires a couple of things. It requires a stairwell to get up there. It impacts where you can place equipment for HVAC equipment, and it can also impact access of firefighters during emergencies. It would also offset a lot of our ability to have photovoltaic arrays as well, or those would get pushed up and they'd create a higher project.
So let me, first, let me, because limited time. When we have rooftop gardens, we have those issues. We don't typically have the entire rooftop occupied. You have to have the HVAC, so that's a given. There's access to the rooftop typically, and so that may need to be modified. But I'm not envisioning that all of the rooftop would be potentially that space, but some portion of it. And so I'm actually very interested in this, and I'm serious about this question because it may, my support for the project may hinge on this, addressing this aspect, which is a shortcoming for the project, which is it is inconsistent with the comp plan in terms of the landscaping and the urban greenery. So is there any potential for a rooftop garden on some portion of the roof?
I would say that it's possible. It's something that can be considered. The two things that we'll have to overcome is the cost of getting up to the roof and also the fact that the units are condominiums and therefore our ownership. Making it a common roof access is even that much more complicated.
Okay. And I would add that, of course, it, there's an amenity to it, that there'd be a value for prospective buyers. So how that would offset against the cost, I don't know. Okay, thank you. And I'll just say that the other, so I'm interested in colleagues' thoughts on this issue. And this, just on a higher vision level, what we have here is we're beginning to see the prospect of the Town and Country area become one that has residents on the periphery. So unlike a Santana Row or something where the high density is on the main street, this would retain a low density in the retail area with density on the periphery. And it's probably the model that is the best that's possible. I can tell you that going back 25 years to the 98 comp plan, there was an interest in housing at this site and the then owners were not interested. And so somehow, along the way, that concept got lost. But it has been a longtime interest by the city to explore that possibility, but had to have a willing partner. So I think this is an interesting concept. Last question. There was an allusion to the end of Encina up against the bike path next to the Caltrain tracks. Is there some access issue that needs to be improved there?
One of the planning commissioners noted that the sidewalk does not continue beyond the driveway into Town and Country. So there is a portion of Encina Avenue between the project site and the entry to the bike trail where there is not a sidewalk. However, we did not consider that to really have a nexus to this project in terms of site improvements.
Okay, so we'll put that on the laundry list. Should there be any future development? Thank you.
I'm going to just make a couple of comments here. I mean, we all know that we're here on a PHZ application and that's converting an existing, I think it's community, what's it called? Community commercial to PHC, and that was created back in 2020. The only clear direction in that motion that was made by council was that 20% of any of the housing had to be affordable and that that was the public benefit instead of the PC, which PHC sort of piggybacked off of. So that motion passed unanimously, by the way, because there was a lot of excitement around that. And council was supposed to get an update 18 months later in 2021, which I don't think happened. And they were supposed to get a revisiting of the concept in 2023, which I was here for that, and I know we didn't do that. So this message, this motion that was created in 2020 basically hasn't been, hasn't been touched. So what that means is here in, now in 2025, these seven council members have to make a decision here. Only two members were here that, for the screening, and none of the others, of the five of us, have seen this before. So we have to make a judgment on this in the context of that law. Also looking at findings and what the public benefit is that the public receives as a benefit for leniency. So the PHC sort of by definition is sort of a risk opportunity for developers because council members change and circumstances change, and that's kind of the Wild West or whatever you want to call it that we're operating in with this kind of law. There's not a lot of guidelines for what we do, so we have to just make some judgment calls. Just a couple more minutes. I was just intrigued to go back and learn as much as I could about this. What was the context for this? A staff report that was written on June 30th after that happened said that council was reacting to severe projected shortfall at the time in arena quotas. They had only 565 building permits issued towards the total eight-year arena cycle of 1,988 units. And they needed to permit 1,423 more units really fast over the next few years to hit their quota. I'm summarizing here, not quoting it. And they projected that then in the next arena cycle, the one we're in right now, the quotas could go up to between 3,500 and 4,400. Bottom line, the impetus for council in 20 to create this was to clearly try something quite radical to jumpstart lots of new projects at scale that would get permitted in '22 and prepare for the '23 to '30 arena cycle, which we're in right now. So it was a declaration of emergency to be solved with lots of buildings and very soon. They don't cover what the prototype or what the poster child project would be, but I imagine it was something like 150 or more rental units to meet the housing goals and especially to help with our desperate need for affordable housing, which in this example would have been 30 units. So with that understanding and review, I turned back to this project and say, you know, what are we getting? And where it starts with, you know, with the original intent of the emergency motion is the scale of 70 Encina that causes me the pause. Here we are, five years later after the motion was passed, and we're considering a PHC designation with special concessions. We get 10 townhomes for sale at multi-million dollar prices, no rental units, and two affordable housing units for purchase. So, you know, back in '20, council's vision was not to get their final 1,423 required housing units over two years in bites of 10, which would be, you know, 143 projects. So that's sort of my concern as I start to look at this. And I thought, looking through this thing and reading it a lot, what, where are we at right now in April of '25? Mentioned six key items, five of which are facts. First of all, since September of '22, council screening, the developer now has come back with one option for housing, which is townhomes for sale. That shouldn't be a surprise because that's where it started. And they stated that it's the only product that pencils economically. No project is, no rental project is feasible. That, perfectly understandable. Ironically, that same staff report from June of '20 said that, quote, "All four of the menu options for developers that they could pick from on the PHC are economically feasible based on analysis of a hypothetical project downtown and along El Camino Real." So it demonstrates that council act in '20 did not contemplate TNC as a housing site nor was a townhome project ever even considered, but we are now. So, second thing is our 6,086 housing quota is triple the number that council faced in 2020, and our current cycle was delayed two years. So we're obviously late. Thirdly, we have ARB recommendation in the positive. PTC has not approved the project with their three-in-three tie. It's not a recommendation, but it's perfectly acceptable for them to send it to council now. Fourth, if approved, as is the project, under any definition at this point in time, as has been discussed, is an island to be decided, to be designed around by future developers from the points of view of its specific location. In a possible larger project, its specific architectural design and the setbacks and other variances requested by the applicant. Fifth, I want to say that the statement of fact, the applicant did what was asked of them in '22 at the screening and came back with a smaller project, which no surprise, there's smaller units. And now just the one speculation that, which is not a fact. I don't know if we did a pre-screening today that we would say that this is what we want. I think we might go back the opposite direction and say we want more height now and we want more density potentially, and we got to get more than the 20 units that you proposed. So circumstances have changed radically because our reading numbers are exponentially higher than in '20 and than in 2020, and we have to figure out a way to get there. So the scale of just getting 10 is what is causing me the pause in this, in this whole thing. I have some other things, but I'll get going here. Vice Mayor Baker?
I get to follow that. So thank you. I'm going to just ask a couple of questions for, to start, and want to thank Councilmember Rektal for asking my seven-inch setback question, so I don't have to, and thank Councilmember Burt for asking my trees, sort of green roof deck question. And you asked for our thoughts on that, and my thought is I'd be quite interested if there's some way to do it. I understand what you mentioned about HVAC and stairs and expense. But I'm quite concerned about heat islands, and we've been doing measurements of that recently around climate concerns. And I just think that if there were a way to do that, I'd be very interested in that and/or if there were a way to add trees elsewhere. From looking at the drawings, I don't have any particular suggestions. I know your options are limited, but I am concerned about that issue as well. My question is just sort of a practical one. In looking at the site of this parcel on the TNC larger site, you know, when we look at, we talked about the back setback, but when we look at the side setbacks, one of the sides of the parcels is along what's now used as sort of the cut-through over to Encina. If you're going to go to the medical foundation, you can, you cut through the parking lots. Would that necessarily need to stay if the other, the rest of the parking lot was developed by, by the Ellis's? In other words, I assume there needs to be some emergency access to the larger parcel. Is that correct? So in other words, would there likely be space on one side of this, this parcel?
Because we don't have a formal application or a preliminary application from Ellis Partners at this time, we have not been able to evaluate what the fire access requirements for the shopping center would be.
Okay. Just seems that there would, one would want something from Encina. I'm not an expert, so I'm not sure where else it would go. So hard to imagine there wouldn't be something there, but okay, fair enough. And just to add on to what Mayor Lowing was saying about the evolution of things. One thing I don't know that we've really called out from the dais that I do appreciate in the application is that in the various, as part of the response and the evolution of the project, that the, both of the BMR units are now at 80% AMI, I think is really a big help. And so I do appreciate that that was not necessary, but got done to get us to that 24% figure. I think I'm going to hold on my further comments from that, and I'll just stop right there for this round. Thank you.
Others? Councilmember Lithgow Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank everybody for their presentations tonight. The applicant and all of those who spoke in public comment. It feels very complicated and as the mayor has pointed out, we're sort of at this intersection of who we were and who we're trying to be. And in some ways, this project is kind of an example that's at the heart of it. I have a technical question about this notion that the PHZ must demonstrate compatibility with existing or potential uses on adjoining sites. Do I have that right, first of all, that that's a requirement?
So, Councilmember, we're going to pull up the findings for a PC, the application.
So on the screen, I am showing packet page 233, I think.
Yes, that's right.
And so this is showing the three findings for Planned Community, findings one, two, and three. Finding one, the site is so situated, and the use or uses proposed for the site are of such characteristics that the application of general districts or combining districts will not provide sufficient flexibility to allow the proposed development. Finding two, development of the site under the provisions of the PC Planned Community District will result in public benefits not otherwise attainable by the application of the regulations of general districts or combining districts. In making the finding required by this section, the Planning Commission combining districts. In making the finding required by this section, the Planning Commission and City Council, as appropriate, shall specify, shall specifically cite the public benefits expected to result from the use of the Planned Community District. And finding number three, the use or uses permitted and the site development regulations applicable within the district shall be consistent with the Palo Alto Comprehensive Plan and shall be compatible with the existing and potential uses on adjoining sites or within the general vicinity.
Thank you for that. And that's getting to the heart of it for me is the sort of sequencing issue we have. We have an applicant that has proposed some years ago to develop some form of housing on this site, and we can wish that somehow we had known also that the adjacent, adjoining parcel owners and managers, Ellis, were potentially interested in housing, and all of this could have been taken into consideration, except it didn't happen that way. We have an applicant in front of us who's been through years and meetings and revisions, and I do worry about the message we send about what others call the Palo Alto process. If it turns out that all of this somehow reaches to a halt because they have learned that, we have learned that, the wonderful news that the adjacent property owner also wants to build housing. I mean, this is, this is truly a win-win in total for the city, should it all come to fruition. So I'm struggling with the obligation about compatibility in finding three, compatibility with existing and potential uses, since we're sort of recently aware that a potential use on an adjoining site is 100 plus units of housing. And I'm, I'm looking to staff for guidance on how normally you handle these things. That is, in some ways, we can't ever know what a potential future use on an adjoining site is, other than what's allowable in the zoning. How do we make a decision today about a potential impact on a potential future use or lack of compatibility with it? If that potential future use is hypothetical until it becomes, you know, a project that's proposed and entitled and permitted and so on?
The ways that staff currently looks at it is the use is referring to the land use and not the density. So we would be looking at housing as being compatible next to future housing. In the case of Town and Country, housing is also appropriate next to the community commercial land use. And so when we're talking about land use for the purpose of the finding, we're thinking land use equals housing commercial. We're not thinking 150 units. Yeah.
Or the setbacks. So the point that there's a seven inch setback on the backside and very little, and trees are being removed and planted elsewhere. I like the idea, the question about a roof garden. How do we assess the extent to which this project is asking us to compromise on some of those expectations we might have, knowing that additional housing might go in around it and will be impacted by the fact that this project has pushed to the edges of its limitations, and we've given some concessions? How do, how do we evaluate the then future impact on that potential second project of housing along Encina?
We believe that this project is sufficient within its boundaries in the same way that a potential future project on adjoining sites would also need to be sufficient and meet fire code, building code within the parameters of their property lines.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question about the tree in Lufi. I'm trying to think creatively about the tree and overall greenery point that a few council members have raised. Is there any precedent for prioritizing the tree in Lufi to apply to, say, the adjacent parts of El Camino, Encina, and the Embarcadero bike path, such that the trees in lieu for this project at least attempt to offset some of the heat island impacts from this project specifically? I'm curious if that's ever happened before.
It's not my, I don't remember a specific case, but I, I do think there's an opportunity for a conversation on where to direct those in lieu funds in areas of the city. I believe the urban forestry department certainly knows where they want to increase the canopy in the city. And to the extent that their mapping and analysis includes this area, that's a conversation that we could certainly have about how we might be able to direct those funds in that area.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to check that. I think it would be useful to maybe consider or take a second look at any tree planting opportunities in the public right of way in the adjacent area, though I realize that there might not actually be opportunities for that, and that would be okay, at least for me. But I'd appreciate, or maybe that's something we could consider if that appreciably tackled some of those concerns. Otherwise, just moving on to some general comments, I think this is ultimately a pretty good project. I think it's rare to get such high quality, family-sized townhome affordable units that can actually be owned. I think it is appropriate for an urban setting in that a small setback is okay for what is ultimately a service alley or passageway, not different than some of the services, not conceptually so different in my mind from the kind of alleyways and zero setbacks we have downtown, like Commissioner Rektal was asking about. So I'm ultimately happy with this project. I think I would be much happier, as everyone agrees, on an expanded, thought-out planned project across that strip of parking lots. But I think what I would want to make clear is that in at least voting to advance this forward, I would support projects at least as dense with similar setbacks, with similar rules for the adjacent sites as well. I think I just want to make that clear personally. And I also hope that negotiations continue and that we can potentially get another proposal before this one is ultimately constructed. But I wouldn't necessarily, I would worry about the message sent, and I wouldn't want to actually block this project due to that speculative future project. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you. I want to ask a question of staff, sort of following up on Councilmember Lithgow Hames' line of inquiry. And that is, since this is a quasi judicial item, not just our regular policymaking, what, what is our standard of review? I, I've looked at the record of land use action. I looked at the three findings that you brought up. And, and I noticed that the ones that followed the ARB findings, they made all six findings in their purview. And so my question is, those are in the Ralua, but then in our staff slides, we have key considerations which overlap but go past that. So if you could just give us a little, like, if we make those findings, do we have a, still have a basis for saying no? If so, what is that? So if you could just give me a little advice on that, please. Mr. Yang, can you walk, folks through it?
Yes. So the normal standard of review for a land use decision is substantial evidence, where the council needs to show the kind of link between the facts and the record, the findings that need to be made, and the ultimate decision, yes or no. In this case, because it is a rezoning legislative item, I believe that the council would likely receive a little bit more deference than, than the usual substantial review, substantial evidence review standard. But that's, substantial evidence is still, I think, the, the basic framework that we're working within. So I guess to answer your specific question, we would, I would recommend that you base your ultimate yes or no decision on the ability to make the findings or not.
That, that was really my question. So, because it's substantial evidence of what? Of those three findings in the Ralua? And that is sort of our job. If we can make those findings or agree with them, then that is our basis for approving this action. And I guess the question is, is it, is it dispositive, or is it just a necessary predicate? You know, I mean, like, in other words, if we make those findings, should we go ahead and approve it? Or is that a baseline, and then we can look at other factors as well?
I would I would suggest that the findings are fairly broad, and so hopefully, you know, any factors that are entering into council's considerations can be tied to those findings in some way, and to, to inform whether or not they can be made.
Okay, I think I hear what you're saying. And I guess more broadly, there's been discussion of how if we were to approve this tonight, then applicant and Ellis theoretically could continue to talk, and you could continue to develop a comprehensive set of housing projects along Encina. I think you would, might end up amending your application, which I think could be done at a later stage. So I don't think, whereas it's not maybe as efficient as starting from scratch, to Councilmember Lithgow Hames' point, we're kind of past that. I would encourage that, because it'd be kind of nice if we could see a consistent, you know, aesthetically pleasing set of housing there. And I would be very receptive to projects like that. But I, it's, it's because it's, we don't have an application in front of us, and for the larger project, I feel that we should, after this point in time, rule on this one on its own merits. So that's where I come down. And when I looked at those findings, I didn't see any reason to disagree with them.
Councilmember Rektal?
I think the mayor brought up a very good point. If this came to pre-screen today, I think we'd say it's not dense enough. We'd kick it back. But the problem is, we didn't. We told you to go down. And now, even though in retrospect, we wish we had told you more density, we didn't. And I think we need to appreciate that, that we did lead you down a path, and you followed that path that we told you to go down, and now we don't like the result. It's your problem, right? So that said, I tend to support this project, but there's still some things that bother me about this. One of them is the greenery. A question for staff, how often do we have the in lieu fees for the trees? Is that, that's standard, right? We've done that in, like, over in San Antonio, we did that for development. How common is the in lieu tree?
It does depend on the project, but it is very common.
Okay. And from a comp plan standpoint, one of the things in the comp plan says the greening of the Town and Country. And so if, if that's a goal of the comp plan is to green, further green the Town and Country, if we do in lieu, like Councilmember Lou was saying, if we planted in the neighborhood of Town and Country, are we still following the comp plan, or are we not following the comp plan?
There are two separate policy, two, L 2.11 encourages projects to incorporate greenery and natural features. I'm reviewing the Town and Country ones, which are L 4. etc. Okay, so L 4.13 encourages, the exact language is, in Town and Country Village, encourage a vibrant retail environment and urban greening.
Okay. And, and so we're losing trees from this portion of Town and Country. Does that mean we can't find the findings? Or does that mean that, how, how specific, how narrow do we have to follow the findings?
Well, so the, the findings are one thing. And the comp plan policies, as was noted earlier, the comp plan is a very high level document that sets forth our aspirations for what we want to accomplish in different parts of the city. And so it talks about the environment and how the city will change or evolve, right, over time. And then it relies on the zoning code to implement those visions and that, that policy into either objective or subjective standards that are set forth in the code, in the municipal code. Included in the municipal code are these opportunities to, how we address when trees do need to be removed as part of a development, and we include procedures for in lieu payment. So when you're looking at a, a development such as this, it's, it's, I appreciate Councilmember Burke's comment earlier about the presentation of the staff analysis relative to the findings, because it's, any, any project will find areas of, you know, general consistency in other areas where it's maybe not as consistent. So what we tend to do is speak about a project's conformance with the general plan in terms of a, on balance, or, and, you know, on balance, the, the project is, you know, more compliant or, or not compliant. And so these are the factors that the council would weigh in its decision, and the findings set forth, then the, the, sort of the rubric for you to make your decision. So without giving you your decision, staff has done its analysis, and we have fallen on a set of findings that we believe can support the project.
Okay, thank you.
Could I address the applicant? The issues that you're hearing are around needing more open space, greenery, and more setbacks, and that's maybe less density. So the question is, is there, is there a willingness to maybe, you know, reduce the size of the space of one or two of the units to accommodate that, so that we can get around that problem for any future developer that have to deal with the setbacks, or maybe they would get assessed? That's not the right word, but they would have to put in more greenery because there's not as much there. What's your flexibility of, of, you know, taking some actions to address those things, or roof gardens, things that we've just been chatting about?
So I think there's two questions there. I'll take them that way. One is setbacks, and the other is greenery. Regarding setbacks, predominantly, the building is setback at least five feet, right? The side yard, CC District requires zero setback. We're pulled back five feet on both sides. The only place that we're down to seven inches is on the rear lot line, and on about, I don't know, 12 or 13 feet of the side lot lines for just the lower story towards the rear portion, those rear garages. And part of the reason for that is, is those one-story bump outs are where the fire department needs to get up onto in order to get access to the roof. So they're serving a couple of possibilities. So if we pull the sides in from the seven inches to the five feet, like the rest of the, of the project, we cause problems for the fire access to the roof. On the rear setback, again, we're, we're facing up against Town and Country, so, and, and their back of house. So if we pull back two, three, or four, or five feet, we basically create dead space on the lot that could be planted potentially, but then also has to be maintained somehow. And it, and it basically greens the edge of, of the service alley. And, and currently, that also underlies a zone that the fire department is relying on, on half of the building at least. So hypothetically, we could, you could, you could shrink the garages on the ground floor and pull the back facade in and create a dead space back there on one side, one half of the project, but the other half needs the fire access to the roof. If that makes sense?
I'm not looking at a drawing, but yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. In terms of greenery, it's a question of finding space. Right now, we're relying in large part on the trees that are in the central courtyard, which is the space that'll get used by occupants the most. The side yards, we started out as more green garden spaces. The fire department needed both of those to, to, again, fight fires in, in that case, were that necessary. So we had to give that space up. So creating more green space that isn't vertical planting on walls, which is another large portion of what we have, would require either something on a rooftop or finding other, you know, other horizontal space. There's There's, it'd be tough. I mean, right now, there's, uh, there's not, in addition to the vertical planting, there's about an 18-inch setback on the side yards past the five foot. It creates, um, space that you can have low planting on as well, if that wasn't clear from the, from the plans.
Is that, just to state this, in a kind of a crude way, is that because you have 10 condos instead of eight? I mean, if you went down to eight, you might've been able to rearrange it on the lot and?
Sure, if you delete two condos, there's space left for greenery. Um, I'm not sure the project works at that point.
Okay, and you did look at other options for projects, um, that were beyond condos, but just sort of wooden pencil, is that correct?
When you say beyond condos, you mean as in rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did look at rentals. Um, very commonly we'll develop a project and think about it, how would this work? We'll actually do cost analysis on the rental side and cost analysis on the condo side. We have to weigh, uh, the BMR impacts, which are also a big piece of the financial equation. And the rentals didn't work.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Stone?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think my, 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 my kind of three big concerns have been addressed. First was the, the setbacks, uh, and this, in particular, whether that would preclude or really be a hindrance to future housing being developed on the site. But kind of now better understanding what we allow in, in downtown and what modern construction allows for. I'm not as concerned about that. And I understand the seven-inch setback in the back, not very concerned about that. I'm always concerned about greenery and I think the, um, the, the, the concerns that have been raised tonight. I mean, I, I always agree with that. This location, I'm, I'm not as concerned. I mean, I'm looking at the satellite image right now of this location. It is a parking lot. It, there isn't much greenery there. I understand we are looking at kind of future residential there, but just the location. I think the applicant said it well, too. This is going to be a very kind of urban setting with the train tracks, El Camino, the hospital and other industrial across the street, Town and Country. And so the, the greenery, I'm not as concerned as I would, as I would typically be. And then the density, I, I completely agree of this came, as, as Councilmember Rektal said, this came before us today, would not be all excited about it. But I was one of the two council members here for the, for the pre-screening. I definitely, uh, I think Town and Country's concerns about it not being compatible for that space and, and just inappropriate density and, and height and kind of where we were at the time. Pretty sure I, I supported the direction for, uh, for the applicant to really work with Town and Country. And they, and they did that. And I really appreciate their good faith effort over the years to be able to work with Town and Country and, and through our process to bring something back that, that works better. Now, I, I agree, I do wish it was denser and taller, we'd get more units. But, um, fact is that, and here we are, of course, I would prefer a coordinated, larger housing project in this location, but fact remains, we've been at this project for several years. There's been plenty of time for those discussions to, to be had. I, I think when this first came as a pre-screening, that, I think that should have been a, a sign that the, that the council and the community may have been open to conversations about a larger housing project. But, um, so I think since we don't have that agreement, I'd rather vote in favor today for a housing project, uh, than deny it in hopes for a future, larger housing project. And again, this doesn't preclude that future, larger housing project, which I hope comes. And I, and I would also encourage the applicant, uh, the applicant to continue to engage with, uh, with Ellis Partners after tonight, if this does pass, to, to see what can be possible there. Again, this is not a perfect project at all. I mean, I think it's a good project, but it's not, it's not perfect. There are still some concerns raised by the PTC and the ARB that have not been, uh, addressed. But I think one of the things that I, that I really appreciate about this project and really appreciate that what the applicant has done are the two BMR units at 80% AMI. I understand that those are going to be able to be offered for a little over $300,000 for a family unit. I mean, that is going to transform the lives of two very lucky families that are going to be able to call Palo Alto home. That would not be if this project was, was there. So, um, so yeah, uh, I'll, I'll be supporting the project tonight.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, um, that in a future agenda, we finally have to get back to looking at the PhD and making some adjustments to it compared to what it was five years ago. Because we're dealing with a completely outdated situation. At the very least, some sort of minimum number of houses to go through all this pain, uh, that we've all gone through for the last, uh, three years on just this one project. It just has to get, it has to get more efficient. Uh, as I said before, the, the applicant did exactly what they were asked to do in, in '22. And, um, no, no surprise, it went down because that's what we asked them to do. So I don't see, uh, penalizing him for that decision. I do think that the two discounted homes are, are a big benefit, but I think it's the only benefit. I mean, the, the, the sort of ROI for the city to get those two homes is pretty, is potentially pretty high. I do think that anytime that you put up a piece of architecture with the design, that sort of creates another issue that has to be designed around. So the island effect that I commented on earlier, um, I think is, is, is not changed. Okay, that's all I have to say. Anybody else with comments? Entertaining motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second?
We're taking the vote. Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you for all the public comment and the heavy work from the staff. Item 13, first reading of adoption of ordinance, uh, 9.75 on fair chance in housing.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor. We'll go ahead and get started. We're still assembling our complete team, but we do have Rebecca Atkinson, um, planner with our department, who's been, uh, the project lead for this, uh, policy discussion. I'll ask Ms. Atkinson to, uh, make a presentation.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present on Fair Chance Housing Policy tonight. As mentioned, I'm Rebecca Atkinson with the Planning Department. And we're joined tonight by a cross-departmental team, including colleagues from the City Attorney's Office, Police Department, Human Services and the City Manager's Office. I'll begin with a brief staff presentation. We also look forward to hearing from members of the public tonight in accompaniment to the comments already sent by email. And also look forward to the council's discussion. Note that we may have, uh, Human Relations Commission Chair Simler in attendance. Next, next slide, please. Fair Chance Housing Policies specify how and when criminal history information can be used in housing decisions. If adopted, these policies offer local protection for potential housing discrimination for, to renters with criminal history. They can also benefit others that might have inaccurate information in criminal, criminal history databases. Tonight represents a meaningful milestone. In response to your prior directions, staff is presenting a draft Fair Chance Housing Ordinance, which is attachment A to the staff report, and an analysis of both intended and potentially unintended implementation consequences, which is attachment C to the staff report. Since receiving council direction in late 2021, both our adopted housing element and council's identified priorities reference this work. Instead of routing through the Policy and Services Committee, staff coordinated with council's Housing Ad-Hoc Committee to discuss Fair Chance Housing Policy Approach Options. Committee members discussed options, including lookback periods, and recommended exploration of the options with the Human Relations Commission. In follow-up, the Human Relations Commission held a public hearing at which they recommended advancing a fair chance housing policy approach that limits the use of criminal history information in rental housing decisions, coupled with implementation of renter procedural protections. The Human Relations Commission also considered, but did not recommend, an alternate policy approach that prohibits the use of criminal history information except for required by law. Neither the Human Relations Commission nor staff recommended this approach for the reason, reasons identified in the staff report. Next slide, please. Fair Chance Housing Policies promote fair cha, fair housing. If adopted, the draft ordinance will become a new chapter in the Palo Alto Municipal Code. Similar to other chapters, this chapter would have definitions, applicability and exemptions, and remedies. Consistent with the HRC recommendation, procedural protections around the use of criminal history information would be established. Examples include considering criminal history only after a conditional offer is made, and also conducting an individualized assessment before any adverse action is taken on a rental application. Next slide. Local jurisdictions may establish fair chance housing policies that are more protective of renters than existing state requirements, as long as they do not conflict with state or federal law. This slide illustrates how the draft ordinance is more protective than state law. Next slide. Here is a high-level summary of procedures in the draft ordinance, designed toward providing a fair opportunity for persons with criminal history to compete for rental housing. These procedures would be applicable if a landlord chooses to use criminal history information. The first three steps, such as making the conditional offer, can typically, typically be completed quickly. The remaining steps apply if the landlord intends to take adverse action based on criminal history information. Next slide, please. The draft ordinance includes important policy topics. A criminal history lookback period length of two years, ordinance applicability and exemptions, implementation and remedies. City council might decide to affirm what is already included in the draft ordinance or might want to provide further direction to staff on these topics. Next slide, please. The proposed timeline here reflects the standard ordinance adoption process with an effective date 30 days after a second reading. Should council request further research, analysis or modifications, staff plans on doing this work in mid-2025. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends that council hold this public hearing to discuss fair chance housing and to receive public feedback and recommends council adoption of the draft Fair Chance Housing Ordinance. Thank you for your consideration and we're available to respond to questions and support the discussion.
Any initial questions from, uh, the DIAS for staff, Councilmember Rektal?
One question about your lookback period, uh, when does that start? Is that on release or is that on sentencing?
Date of sentencing.
Okay, so if someone in the say has a three-year sentence, that means the day they get out, the landlord would not be able to check for their criminal history?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. The lookback, the back period would be from the date of application or the, the type of, of, uh, decision being made. The, the date of the record would be the day of sentencing in order to establish the difference, the time scale.
So, so you're saying if someone had a three-year sentence and came out and applied for housing the day after they were released from prison, they would be, that'd be three years from the sentencing? And if we had a two-year lookback, then that very first day, the landlord could not look at his record?
I think that the procedures set up the, the ways in which a landlord could look at criminal history information. State law already requires, um, looking at only directly related convictions.
Correct.
So it's not just any conviction.
Yeah, but let's say this is a pertinent conviction. What, we have a two-year lookback, what period does that cover? Is it?
Councilmember Rektal, I think to answer your specific question, the answer is yes. If the sentencing occurred beyond more than two years prior to the date of the application, then the landlord would not be able to consider that conviction regardless of whether or not it's a directly related conviction.
That's what I was trying to get at, thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Ms. Mayor, um, following up on Councilmember Rektal's question, because that was a concern of mine. So why, I wanted to understand why staff is proposing we look, that, that lookback period is the time from conviction rather than from the date of release from custody? Because the, the data on recidivism that staff and the HRC was basing it on, from like, there, there were several reports that were cited in why staff and the HRC were making these recommendations. The reports appear to be looking at, as far as looking at recidivism rates, seems to be looking at time of release, not a time of conviction. And I just don't really understand the logic behind date of conviction, because if someone is convicted and then sentenced and they're, they're, they've got a prison sentence of three years or two years or more, if we do the two-year lookback, then you're never going to be able to see that as a, as a landlord. So can you kind of walk me through that, that logic? And why were reports cited that seems to actually be using date of release rather than date of sentencing?
Well, I, I think that in general, um, you know, when, when people are released, it's considered that they did, that they served their time and so forth. So I think that's important to consider.
So I think first and foremost, I believe it follows state law. Is, isn't that correct? In terms of the date of sentencing?
State law doesn't have a lookback period. And I think, um, the data that staff cite in the report, uh, varies in terms of whether or not it analyzes from date of release or date of conviction or date of sentencing. It's, it's standard in, uh, many of the other ordinances that staff base their, uh, proposed ordinance on to consider date of sentencing. And in addition to the point that, um, Rebecca made about, um, the policy rationale being that once somebody is released from incarceration, they've, uh, generally been considered to be rehabilitated. Another important, uh, policy, uh, piece of feedback that staff received was that, uh, the time immediately succeeding release from incarceration is a particularly vulnerable time for people who have experienced incarceration. That's a particularly impactful time to be looking for housing.
Okay, thank you. I think interesting, I'm interested to hear our our conversation afterwards, but I think it would be relevant to be able to, for a landlord to be able to see if a person has been able, after they've been released from prison, if they have been able to stay out of trouble and and not cause issues of concern for a for prospective landlord. But I know we're doing questions now, so I'm going to try to keep it to that. So a couple, I think, just a couple of quick ones for clarification. When a landlord runs a prospective tenant's criminal history check, if there is a lookback period, will they be able to access the criminal history during that time? Or will they only like when they ask for the the criminal background check? Do they only receive, let's say if it's a two-year lookback, they only receive that two-year window, or do they get the entire criminal history report, and then they're supposed to just kind of look at the two years?
My understanding is that all records will be coming depending on the different types of databases being used, be it, you know, databases that are only from government sources all the way to like very generalized searches where the records are scraped and reused and reused. So I think that that what could be seen is quite wide, and they may or may not have the disposition of any particular type of maybe arrest or something and so forth. I think it could be quite variable what a landlord would see.
Okay, thank you. Then one more question with my remaining time. The exemption for properties with three or four, sorry, with three or fewer units requires that the property owner to be living in the property. So this ordinance as proposed would would act, would apply to a single-family home, assuming that the property owner is not living there?
Correct. The definition of landlord in the ordinance is similar to to other definitions of landlord elsewhere in the municipal code. And it has a property owner or property manager in the definition of landlord, so it actually could be both.
Okay. Thank you. We'll hold my questions to the next round.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you, and I think we're all zeroing in on the same issue, and my fingers were slower. So thank you for for raising that. And I do wonder if I'm I'm under the impression that some of these databases, while they can look at convictions, arrests, indictments, various things, it may not be very easy to get dates of incarceration and when, once they're done, once you're released. I'm not sure that is so readily available in these background checks from what I have been told. And so it may be an ease thing, I wonder. But nonetheless, it's a logic thing. And my worry is that we may even be disadvantaging those who commit less egregious crimes and advantaging those who commit more egregious crimes. So just by way of example, if my friend X and I both got out of prison yesterday and we both go apply for an apartment, and I just finished a six-month sentence for trespass, it's a criminal trespass, and X just finished a sixteen-year sentence for residential arson and homicide, they're going to come up clean and I'm going to come up with the record. I probably lose the apartment. That doesn't seem right. And so I I'm thinking that we need to to sort that out. And so I wonder if that's part of why the legislature didn't do a lookback. But I did look at your comparison charts, which were super helpful, by the way. Thank you for compiling those. And it looks like some other jurisdictions may do a proxy type thing. I noticed that New Jersey is has some lookbacks of different lengths that are based on the severity of the offense. Colorado has a lookback but has exceptions for serious crimes. Right here in our state, the California Investigative Consumer Reporting Agencies Act has exceptions for certain serious crimes. So was there any look at that to try to deal with this logical prop, this logic problem we have with it with just a flat lookback? And if not, could we?
Thank you for that. And sure, feedback is welcome and appreciated. In general, what is considered a felony and misdemeanor could differ across different jurisdictions.
Right.
And so, and and also the the HRC recommendation, just for the record, was to include a two-year lookback period for both misdemeanors and felonies. And so, given the differences in how offenses should, you know, can show up in criminal history databases, that was also one one consideration to have a a single lookback period. The other is how to say. Try to try to figure out how to say this. Given that it's an individualized assessment, and it would be on the obligation of the landlord to identify directly related convictions, that's another reason to have it, you know, have a lookback period and then have the landlords make make their decisions and do that process rather than specifying what types of offenses are considered something to consider or not, right, rather than the local work organization, local government doing that.
I really appreciate that the landlord can say this may be within the directly, like I was trying to give two examples that related, you know, trespass on the residential arson. But, you know, they can decide they don't care about either. I just think that what they're aware of becomes oddly uneven, given the the having a cutoff for this lookback. So it seems like almost you should have no cutoff, or you you don't do it at all. There should be no reason to to look back. I mean, to look at it at all. It's just hard to draw this arbitrary line because you end up with a with bizarre circumstances of what you learn and don't learn. And I think that in a perfect world, we could figure out and include when somebody was released. But I think that that probably, and that's what something I don't know that we know tonight, may be something that may not be readily available in databases for searching. But that I would be curious to know the answer to that.
It might be possible when public comments, it might be possible when we come into public comments that people waiting to speak might have some information to speak to your question.
Councilmember Bert?
Yeah, thanks to my colleagues for raising this concern on the lookback. It it really does seem to be problematic. And one question I had, I believe that San Francisco has a seven-year lookback period. Is that correct? So and then is it also correct that the the council Housing Ad Hoc Committee had talked about the prospect of maybe two different lookback periods at three-year for, maybe it was one set of of whether it was for misdemeanors and five years for felonies. I'm not sure. I think it's noted in the report, but no depth to what that was. I'm not sure that they made a specific recommendation versus suggested consideration of that. So how did, why are we focusing on a two-year versus a stepped one, maybe three to five, or San Francisco's alternative, which is historically been a very liberal community in in these regards? And they apparently had this for some time. Why are we not looking at at those alternatives?
I think there are a couple of different parts to your question, and I appreciate that. In general, as policymaking in the fair chance space has moved forward, like more recently had produced a proposed rule where three, anything longer than three years for misdemeanors and felonies was considered presumptively unreasonable based on all of the various points of reference that they included in the proposed rule for consideration, including the the how the risk of recidivism is reduced over time and so forth. So so in 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 balance, in regard to the research on recidiv- recidivism rates and wanting to account for that as well as how housing stability really offers something that's important towards helping people reenter into the community and so forth.
The good intentions. But what I'm trying to focus on is really my question, which is, yeah, directly.
So so maybe just to take a step back and perhaps I should have framed this when we started the the presentation. It's been a a few years since the city council, different members then that are here now, had given staff direction to to study this issue and to report back on the, you know, implications of of a fair chance policy. And we've reached out to the Human Relations Commission. We've had a number of community engagement opportunities. But one thing that we haven't really had a chance to do was check in with the city council on how you want this policy to develop. And so what we've presented to you tonight, maybe a little inartfully, we intended to sort of frame this as a discussion to receive, you know, to share what we've learned and to get feedback. And we included an ordinance as a starting place for you to begin to look at it and find areas that you were supportive with and other areas that you thought need further refinement. And we're hearing very clearly, you know, the lookback provision might be one of those areas. So from a staff perspective, we wanted to make sure that you had options to take action if you wanted to take action tonight. But if there are policy items that you haven't had a chance to really dive into, we would just love to hear that feedback and get that direction. And then we can go back and we can make some refinements to the ordinance. We may not have all of the answers to those, that level of questioning. But we can certainly receive that feedback and come back to the council.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I'll wait until comments to kind of follow up on the recidivism patterns and how the, yes, it's a declining rate of likelihood of recidivism, but it grows every year. It's so anyway, we can talk about that a little bit later.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you, and thank you to my other council members for really asking my questions. I just want to have a couple of clarifications. So in the Colorado lookback window, there was an exemption or an exception for serious crimes. Has staff or any bodies up to now kind of considered the workability of a exception for serious crimes to have a longer lookback window? Yes, or just any comment on the workability of something like that?
Madam, could you check that one? Thank you.
Sure. So nobody, the HRC, nor the Housing Ad Hoc, nor I think those are the two that this has gone to so far, explicitly considered that proposal and staff didn't put forth a a prospective definition of serious crimes. I think, you know, logically, we can all appreciate that there would be implementation challenges with defining what a serious crime might be, including something that Rebecca mentioned earlier, which is that even if we were to call out certain types of offenses, not every offense is classified in in easily, in a one-to-one way in different jurisdictions. So if, for example, we were dealing with a a conviction from another state, it's not always a one-to-one between that offense and one that exists in the California Penal Code, for example. So once we try to go offense by offense or even category of serious crimes versus not, there are implementation challenges.
Yes, I totally understand that, and I appreciate the discussion, the brief discussion on the workability of that. I have another question kind of about de facto ways to circumvent this ordinance. And maybe I just see more context on the general state of our lease and renter ordinances. Would it be viable for a landlord to say, I want to know the locations of where you last lived and I want a reference from your last landlord or something like that? That would effectively exclude people who maybe were recently released, who do not have who the state presumably would not, you know, just give the reference for as a tenant, you know? I imagine there are so many ways like that that could potentially circumvent this. And how have we considered or discussed that so far?
Thank you for the question. I think you point out one of the realities of the ordinance where, you know, and and in in the staff report, we also mentioned that it's really not possible to prevent someone from running a criminal history check without consent. But the procedures offered in this code do offer, you know, some protections. And this is just a a a small piece of the overall, you know, situation. It it's 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 one means by which to address. It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a problem with the ordinance itself. It's just the situation where it's just one way to be able to address some of the circumstances with the problems with criminal history databases and providing renters with a fair opportunity to compete.
Yes, I definitely understand that, and thank you.
Councilmember Lithgow Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the order of operations are such that my colleagues have really asked my big question. But I just want to underscore that I think we all appreciate the illogic of a lookback period that starts with sentencing. Because as Vice Mayor pointed out, you commit arson. These are supposed to be directly related convictions are the only ones that should be considered arson, you know, residential arson. You know, you're going to be in prison longer than two years, and those people are going to somehow be, you know, let off. But somebody who did something far less, you know, will have their criminal conviction looked at. So I just think it's an error, actually. I, in fact, I've, you know, as problematic as AI is, there is an AI related to Google that thinks that California's Fair Chance for Housing Act includes a lookback period for criminal history checks when screening tenants measured from the date of release from incarceration. And somewhere else, I saw it stated as generally starts from the date of disposition, release, or parole. So I just think we got to figure out what it is, and I I imagine that we'll get that sorted out. Thank you.
Let's go to public comment.
Our first speaker is Emily R.
Welcome to Palo Alto.
There, oh. Can you hear me? It's on, it's on. Yay. Good evening, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Emily Ann Ramos, and I'm here on behalf of SV at Home, a nonprofit advocacy organization that works to build our collective power and advocate for systems of change to achieve housing affordability and justice throughout Santa Clara County. I'm here tonight to express our strong support for the proposed fair chance housing ordinance and to urge the councils to commit staff time and resource to ensure effective effective enforcement, not just for this policy, but for the full suite of tenant protections you have adopted in recent years. SV at Home has been honored to partner with the city since 2019 through the Partnerships for the Bay's Future Grant, which brought in a challenge grant fellow to support the development of tenant protections. Thanks to this work, the council has already adopted important ordinances, expanding relocation assistance, establishing local just cause eviction protections, and strengthening rent data collection. The fair chance ordinance is a critical next step. We know that BIPOC communities are disproportionately We know that BIPOC communities are disproportionately impacted by the criminal legal system. And this policy removes an unjust and unnecessary barrier to housing. Staff has done the work to ensure that the ordinance is aligned with state law, focuses and scope, and includes due process. More importantly, the research shows that criminal history is not predictive of tendency and that stable housing actually reduces recidivism. This is about fairness, safety, and the belief that everyone deserves a place to call home. As always, SV at Home is committed to edu help, to helping educate residents about their rights. But the city's investment in this enforcement is key to making these policies real for people who need them the most. Thank you for your leadership in building a more inclusive Palo Alto. Your actions continue to serve as a model for the region. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anil B.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. I want to express my concerns that I've expressed prior on the duplicative nature of these, of this ordinance. These protections exist already at the state level. Focusing staff time on educating the, on existing protections would be a better use of time and budget rather than placing an additional burden on staff and city budget with an ordinance like this. Adopting a parallel set of regulations would create confusion amongst Palo Alto residents and housing providers on protections that exist, whether they're at the state level or local level. Existing, the existing process for these protections already exists and do not need to be duplicated one more time. I would also like to point out that the previous conversation that the council has been having due to over the confusion of how this ordinance should be structured also underscores the unnecessary nature of this ordinance. I, I want to close by also thanking and commending Rebecca Atkinson for her diligent outreach to all parties, including the California Apartment Association, on staying engaged with us and hearing from our point of view on this ordinance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Kate S.
Hi, this is Mary Kate Stimmer. I am the Chair of the Human Relations Commission. Thank you so much for taking the time to revisit the fair, the fair housing provision. And thank you to my fellow commissioners for the work they've done on this. And of course, for the staff for pulling together a tremendous amount of research to help inform these decisions. I wanted to address a couple of the questions that have come up already to, to Commissioner Lou's question around, are there loopholes and ways of getting around this provision? One of the things we did was kind of set up that procedure where a, a tenant would have to get a provisional offer, give their consent to having their background checked. And then that way would be more clear when that background check uncovered something that's informing the landlord's decision. And so that was one way we were thinking through, how would, how did tenant ever know whether or not this ordinance would be violated? We did talk about the look back period a bit, but this nuance around when it would begin and whether that would be after a release from prison or from the date of conviction is, was not something we actually tuned on to, turned on to. So I'm glad you're bringing it up now and I think it is worthy of more discussion. I think it was a bit of an oversight on our behalf. And there were a few other items that the HRC brought up in our discussion. They're all listed on page 309 of your packet. But essentially, the other ones were what would be considered a directly related offense? And whether or not drug offenses should or should not be included in that? And given that so many drug-related offenses are, would be, would be revealed through a background check, giving tenant, giving landlords some guidance there would be helpful. And the other thing that was a major point of discussion for the HRC was really how hard it will be for a tenant to penalize a landlord who will, who could take into account wrongly their conviction. So keep in mind, a tenant would have to apply for rental, have their background checked, notice that an offer of rent would be rescinded and then would actually need to sue their landlord. There's no provision for something easier like going to a rent board or just having a penalty enforced. They would actually need to go to court and win that case. And so it's a pretty high bar for a tenant, especially one who might be dealing with such complexities as, you know, dealing with past convictions or being recently released from prison. So those were discussion points for us and I'm really happy to see the way in which you're paying close attention to the details because I do think those will matter a lot in how these play out for our tenants and our landlords. So thank you so much.
That concludes public comment on Action Item 13.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baker.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I do want to thank Ms. Atkinson and others who brought this forward tonight. I appreciate our process of asking questions first, but it leads me to jump into the one thing that bugs me instead of all of the things I like about this. And so I, I do want to say that I do really appreciate this coming forward and all the work that's gone into it by the various groups that were identified on that slide that, who helped shape it. You know, I, I care deeply about fair housing. I spent 20 years on the Law Foundation Board promoting that. I've always supported renter protections, you know, the just cause of that conviction, all of that. And I do appreciate and understand the link between being unhoused and recidivism. And it would be good to do something about that. And I do understand that BIPOC communities may be disproportionately impacted by the criminal justice system and that criminal history is not necessarily predictive of tendency outcomes. And I also support the consistency with the state law prohibiting consideration of anything but directly related convictions. I like that. And I do appreciate and support the procedural steps suggested by the HRC that a landlord must take before rejecting, before even like, well, before rejecting somebody based on criminal history, such as making a conditional offer before doing a background check. So all of that is great. I just think that we got, we need to fix this, this, this issue that we've identified. And so I wonder if a little more work could be done. One, finding out if we can even get incarceration and release data. Because if so, that might be something interesting to consider how we could use that. If, if there was a incarceration or release within X period of the look back. And if not, try to figure out what's the best proxy. And while difficult for all the reasons that were mentioned, you know, differences in states and things, there might be some way to do that. And I, I think when I read through the chart of the other entities that have all these serious crimes, exceptions or things, that's probably what they're trying to do. I don't know that, but I think with some more time and analysis, we could sort out something that's sort of a proxy. Because, you know, the criminal justice system, as imperfect as it is, it is, you know, presumably takes into account a variety of factors in assessing, you know, setting a length of a sentence. The nature of the crime, whether it's a first offense, whether the remorse is exhibited, all of those kinds of things. And so, you know, the more egregious the offense, the longer the sentence, the less likely we are to find out about it. We got to, we got to figure out how to get around that. So I guess for me, I, so, so I'm not inclined to pass the ordinance tonight, but I do want us to continue to pursue it as a city. And I'm hoping the things I mentioned could be looked at and that we could, could see it again. So I don't know where that leaves us, but I'm curious if my colleagues agree with that and then we can figure out what to do.
Okay, I'm going to make a few first round comments. One, yeah, like, like everyone else, I was doing case studies when I was reading this thing to figure out why we aren't using release dates and calculating when the look back would be and so on. If you know, if somebody goes to jail and is convicted and goes to jail in 20 and they're out in 20, January 2021, do we add five years and it's 26 and we look back? Because a couple of cases here, like on packet page 303, there's a three-year, a couple of quotes about how three years out, the, the repetitiveness is, is quite good and then five years is even better. So we're getting all these data points, but it's after they're out when they're being tested to make sure they don't get into other criminal situations. So I really concur with, with looking at that. And I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody said. I had a question about, you said other jurisdictions wouldn't be interpreting laws the same way. Is that other states or is it also other cities within the state? Because I would think in California state law basically rules in terms of defining the nature of the crime.
That would certainly be the case if the person was convicted and sentenced in California. If, for instance, somebody was convicted of a crime in Nevada and was convicted under Nevada state law, there might not be a one-to-one comparison between the offense that they were convicted for in Nevada and something that we would understand under the California criminal laws.
But wouldn't we be allowed to apply the California standards because they're renting in California?
Certainly, but it might not always be easy to understand what the relevant California standards would be because the categories of crimes in different jurisdictions, here we're talking about states, are different.
Okay. And I do think, as Councilmember Burt said, that, you know, it's significant and has some credibility that San Francisco, a rather liberal town, has seven years and has kept it. So that's, that's significant. I also just want to put out, point out an example of the bad guys get past the system. And you do get some terrible tenants that are not just a threat to the landlord, but to fellow tenants. I'm speaking from, I'll say, almost direct personal experience because my son in an apartment in LA had this happen. And the person who was a multiple convicted criminal was still doing criminal activity, including drugs in the apartment, carrying guns. And my sons are, tried to turn him into a landlord and then they started coming after him and slid his wife's tires. And luckily he kept his three iron by the front door to protect himself. But that was, it was, it was, we can't ignore that if we, that the, the threat to tenants and to landlords are really, they're, they're quite real. So we have to take a, a look back somehow at, at some level. Let's see, I think Councilmember Stone was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a question, under section one of the findings and declarations for the draft ordinance, letter J states that most convictions occurred during the first and second year of the three-year follow-up period. And then it cites footnote 10, a report from California Department of Corrections regarding recidivism rates in fiscal year 2018 to 2019. But when I look at the report and if the, if the clerk can show the, the graph, I'm referring to this graph that was shown on page three of the Department of Corrections report that staff cited, again, as footnote 10, to justify that, that statement in the findings and declarations. I don't know if I'm reading this wrong. I mean, this, to me, this shows that recidivism rates actually increased year to year from year one to year three. So I'm, I'm kind of confused by, by this and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, but I'm wondering if staff can clarify where in the report that it shows that most convictions are occurring during years one and two and then falls off in year, in year three. I'm trying to, trying to understand again, kind of then logic when we're looking at what is that, what is that look back period and what is going to make the most sense?
Thank you for flagging that. And this, this text in the, in the findings, it was stated in, in the report. And I did also have, it, it took a while to understand all of the different tables and I'd be happy to take another look at that and, and, and write, write up the response and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, because I, I guess I, I did look at a couple of these tables cross-eyed myself, you know?
And there's a lot. I mean, it's, it's a great rapport. I think there's a lot of information that can inform us in making this decision. So that would be helpful. It does not look like we're at a place tonight that we're going to be able to approve the, the draft ordinance anyways. I think we're going to get another bite at this. So that would be helpful. Clerk can take that graph down. Another question, I know hate incidents are recorded by, oftentimes recorded by law enforcement, but most of them aren't actionable as hate speeches, unfortunately, constitutionally protected free speech. But I do think a history of hate incidents should be caused to deny someone from, from renting in a, in a, in a private action between a landlord and a prospective tenant, even if those might not actually show up with a directly related conviction. Somebody who has a history of, of hate incidents or hate speech or targeting certain groups, I think that is relevant to their, to their suitability for being a, a tenant. So that's my question. Is, is there a way that those, that hate incidents would show up on a criminal background check? Is that something that we could incorporate as, because I know it's not a conviction, but possibly incorporated as something that a landlord could consider?
So staff will have to follow up on that. We can check with the police department. I would be surprised if, if something at the level of a police report that doesn't result in a charge and conviction would actually make it into criminal history that would generally be showing up in a search. And different jurisdictions, city by city, county by county, may actually have very different practices with respect to documenting hate incidents. We do do that on a routine basis here at Palo Alto Police Department, but I don't know that that's a widespread practice. So we'll follow up on that.
And then follow up on that, I mean, the ordinance as proposed, would it preclude a landlord? If it doesn't, if it's not showing up in a criminal history background check, the landlord finds out, I mean, someone takes a video of someone going off on some sort of racist rant and that landlord gets a hold of that video. Is, do they have a basis to be able to deny the applicant based on that? Or does, would this ordinance prohibit that?
I don't think that this ordinance would prohibit that because if they, if it doesn't show up in their criminal history, it's not taking action based on something that's in their criminal history. And it doesn't change the landlord's ability to say, I don't want to rent to somebody who has engaged in this type of behavior.
That's good to hear. Perfect. Thank you. And then one more question, just now understanding the prospective applicant and their remedy. If a landlord completes that criminal background check and that applicant then wants to dispute any of the findings, I mean, is there any requirement that the landlord actually has to consider that evidence? Or is it then just the discretion of the landlord? And if the tenant or prospective tenant is still unhappy with it, they have the right to be able to pursue civil litigation?
The landlord is required to consider mitigating information or evidence of inaccuracy in the criminal history report that they receive. If they receive that information, they ultimately do decide to take adverse action based on the person, the applicant's criminal history information. They have to include in the written statement of reasons how they took that information into account. And then that becomes sort of a documented paper trail for the applicant whose next step would then be to bring a lawsuit.
Just echoing Maddie's response, so you could find the actual information that the landlord would need to provide in the draft ordinance 9.75070 E, E1B, which is sounds like really long down the list, but it says directly that you have to explain how the evidence or other information submitted by the renter was taken into the account. So it's specific and needs to be included in that notice to the renter.
All right. Thank you. And then just a few thoughts. Appreciate staff and all the work from the HRC and other community members that have helped develop this. I think this is a really good start, clearly not there yet to, tonight. I think that we're giving really good direction on what we want to see. I definitely want to see the, that the look back window changed. I do not think it should be at date of conviction. I really think this needs to be at the, at the date of release. I understand that that might be challenging information, but to me, date of conviction is really irrelevant. We need to be, I think a landlord has the right to be able to see that a person after being released has been able to successfully reenter society and to be able to do so, to be able to do so in a way that is not threatening to the landlord, the property or the, or the tenants. And as a renter myself, concerned about those, those things. And we have about 46% of our community that are renters and we want to make sure that we are protecting them as well. But also recognizing that people deserve a second chance. We need to ensure that we are using data that's informing We need to ensure that we are using data that's informing our decision, and that is clear that recidivism does get worse when there is housing instability. So I think finding that balance is what we're trying to do, and I think we're, we're getting, I think we're getting there. I do think separating serious crimes, i- is it going to be an important piece to this? I, I can see a three-year look back window, which I think I'm more comfortable with. That's how I'm interpreting this data correctly, but I may be wrong, so interested when this comes back. Um, but it seems to me, three-year window makes the most sense for less serious crimes, more serious crimes. I, I think a 10-year look back window would, would make more, more sense. Um, I, I think we should look closer into exempting single-family home rentals, even if the property owner is not living there. We've, we've exempted single-family homes from, from a variety of other, other things. I'm, I'm always kind of concerned about the chilling factor that that could have, that a person who is just renting out, um, their, their second home, do they then remove it from the market if they feel like they are not able to be able to step in and, and prevent somebody with a fairly serious criminal history, um, from being able to, to rent? So, um, I think those are my, yeah, I think those are my, my thoughts. So thank you. And, um, I, I think, again, I, I, I think a fair chance ordinance is the right thing for our city to pursue. We just need to improve it.
Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. So I wanted to, one, talk about this, um, difficulty we have of distinguishing between, um, serious crimes and, um, uh, less serious crimes and the difference from state to state. I would recognize that that problem exists, but that difference is less than the difference between a serious crime and a not serious crime, however we might define it. So the fact that we can't have perfection in how we establish these standards, I don't think should mean that we abandon certain principles of distinguished, distinction. And, um, you know, there are some states that one crime may be categorized as a misdemeanor and another a felony, but we know the difference between a violent, serious violent crime and, uh, trespassing. That's a much bigger difference than what we have from state to state generally. How we reconcile that? It's not simple, and I recognize that, but to imply that we can't really make those distinctions because of state to state differences, I don't accept. I'm not saying it's easy. And then, um, can we have the, the, um, the graph that Councilmember Stone had up there? Because, um, I think it actually is more clear. So my understanding is whether we look at arrests, convictions, or, uh, even returns, uh, year one, in the first year, we get 21% of convictions, um, on, um, after release. Year two, we have a cumulative amount of 32.7%. So we had an additional 11% or 11 and a half percent the second year. So it is correct that it's a declining rate, but the, the, um, the probability of a conviction by year three is up to 42%. And it continues to grow. So we don't want to dismiss how serious this is, and we all wish that our criminal justice system prepared, uh, convicted, people convicted and incarcerated, uh, to better be ready to re-enter society and not resort to recidivism. But that wish doesn't change what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the consequences of, uh, the shortcomings of that system, as well as the responsibility of those who are committing those acts, because we can't blame it all on the system. So we also, uh, I don't know that we have off top of our, uh, the knowledge here is when we, we're focusing on convictions and we see arrests, but arrests are even far fewer than crimes. So that we, we, we have a standard that unless someone has been convicted, they are legally innocent. But there is certainly something we should recognize that, um, rearrest may not result in a conviction, uh, but that doesn't mean that no illegal activity has occurred there. Uh, we just have a standard for conviction. And it doesn't mean that every crime has had an arrest and far from it. So the reality is that we have a much higher recidivism rate of crime than we do conviction. And we can all wish that wasn't the case, but it is. And so what we're worried about is how to allow landlords to distinguish, um, prospective tenants based upon the likelihood that they're going to, uh, recommit a serious crime. That's what we're trying to protect and not really just protecting the landlords, but the fellow tenants in the community. And we have to figure out how to strike that right balance. That doesn't mean we don't have a fair chance housing ordinance, but we can't do it based on the world that we wish existed. So those are my concerns. I'm not sure how we're going to refer this back, uh, because we really need to give some fairly meaningful direction, or staff is not going to know what to do next.
Director Litt, do you think these comments that we're making are enough to come back with another draft, or should it go to a subcommittee of this body? Or you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, we're certainly open to any, uh, uh, any path forward. I, I'm hearing a measure of consistency in the comments, uh, so I feel like we have, um, information that we could, um, react to. I guess the question that I have is, would you want us to, um, uh, so I guess there's a couple of options that we could consider. Um, one is we could, um, engage with the Policy and Services Committee and can try to work through that process to, uh, refine the ordinance. We could go back and work with the HRC, um, with, you know, uh, right?
Or we could bring it back to council after conferring with the city attorney's office to see what is the most, um, we'll say, defensible, uh, approach to, based upon what I heard this evening, a, um, extending the look back period, uh, to a level that's, uh, reflective of the seriousness of the crime.
So I guess the answer to my question is you are getting enough input from each of us to, with what you just said.
Well, what you just heard was our read of it. I think the question for the council is, do you think you gave us that sufficient clarity that we could just bring it back to you?
I would move that we refer to Policy and Services Committee. I, I would like to see this thoughtfully fleshed out and not just come back for a council debate like this.
Okay, can we just get the rest of the comments before that actual motion?
Well, I can put a motion, I put a motion on the table.
Okay, it's on the table. There is a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember, uh, I think it was, uh, Vice Mayor Vicker was next.
Uh, thank you. Just three quick things, um, the third of which we'll chime in on this motion. First, I just wanted to mention that, um, you know, I read the chart, as does Councilmember Burt, uh, as a cumulative bars. Um, and the recidivism rates are high and they are serious, but I want to bear in mind that part of the purpose of this fair chance ordinance is to try to help reduce them by giving people stable environments and having them be housed. So hopefully it will make some impact, but yes, we're having this whole conversation because I, I agree, they are serious. The second thing I wanted to just mention, um, for, to staff, as you consider this, and you may well know this, but, um, also for my colleagues, um, when we look at s- serious crimes and we look at these look back periods, and, uh, in the staff report, it mentions, um, the state law provides that in order to protect persons at risk, a landlord may consider whether a potential renter is listed on the state registry of lifetime sex offenders. And so that may feel like some comfort that that's handled. Well, kinda, because the, the lifetime registry is, there's, there's different tiers of crimes, uh, for sex offenders. And there's, uh, I don't know them that well, but I know tier, tier, uh, three is what gets you on the lifetime sex offender list. And I know that tier two still includes, uh, physical rape. And that's a 20-year list or something, and that's not here. So you don't necessarily see a lot of different sex crimes, and maybe we do, maybe we don't, you know, care about those different tiers, but I think that's just something to be aware of as we go to the next step and, and factor this in, that it's not just handled by this lifetime sex offender registry. That's my second point. And the third point, with respect to the motion on the table, um, the, um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine for it to come to PNS. Uh, I, I, I think that's a fine way to handle it. I do think that I'd love to see the planning department and the city attorney's office both work on this, because I do really think there's a lot of legal niceties about, you know, state to state and the whole, I can appreciate, you know, just even homicides, like they don't line up right. So, uh, we could probably be smart enough to figure something out along these lines, but, um, I would really appreciate you all continuing to work together on this. And so, so I'm, I'm, uh, supportive of the motion, and I felt like you probably have enough to bring it back to us at PNS.
Councilmember Rectal?
A lot of me too here, but I'll give a quick, uh, I mean, we just really don't want someone who makes one mistakes and have a minor crime to have that compounded by not being able to find stable housing afterwards. So we really have a lot of good intentions for that person, but we have to balance those good intentions with the good intentions for the landlords and the other tenants. And it's just, we can't close our eyes to the fact that other tenants are impacted by this. So that's why I think policy and services is the right way to go. I, I think the look back window makes no sense if you're starting net sentencing. I think it has to be from release. And also we have to separate minor crimes from violent crimes. I think those are all really important.
Any other comments on the motion? Okay, let's go to a vote, please.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Excellent, uh, comment and a lot of team cooperation to make all this happen with HRC and staff and council and PNS and we're gonna get this, we're gonna get this, as, uh, Councilmember Stone said. Okay, thank you. I think that means that we're adjourned.